We need to start is here, so we will go ahead and get started. I'd like to welcome everybody to the February sixteenth, Eureka City Council meeting. And we are going to start tonight with a roll call, please.
Mayor Seaman?
Here.
Councilmember Castellano?
Here.
Councilmember Moulton?
Yeah.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Here.
Councilmember Bauer?
Here.
Councilmember Bergel?
Here.
All right, I'm gonna make just a couple incredibly quick announcements and then we have some proclamations. One is, we do have a traffic safety task force meeting scheduled for March tenth at one thirty. So for those of you who are wondering if things are moving forward, that they are. And the fifth annual Champions for Children event is going to be held on February twenty-third. They've asked for a proclamation, but he didn't have it in time to read it at this meeting here. But I did want everybody to know it's the Kiwanis does it, well, they have for the past five years to celebrate Champions for Children. And since the mission of our Eureka Children and Families Initiative is to be champions for children, I thought it was worth mentioning that that's going to be happening. And I'm looking forward to helping them celebrate. Next, I would like to invite, we have a couple of proclamations, and I have asked Natalie Arroyo to do a presentation for healthcare heroes. And we have St. Joseph Hospital here, and it's a partnership also with Humboldt Area Foundation. So Councilmember Arroyo.
Thank you, Mayor. So we do have someone here to receive this. I see a couple people. Welcome. All right, so this is a proclamation in recognition of honoring healthcare heroes at St. Joseph Hospital, presented on this day, February sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Whereas during the greatest health crisis of our lifetime, the caregivers at St. Joseph Hospital in Eureka have answered the call to serve their communities with reverence for human life and individual dignity. And whereas their grit, perseverance, and love during one of the worst pandemics in history is nothing short of awe inspiring. And whereas the physicians, nurses, laboratory scientists, infection prevention specialists, respiratory therapists, medical techs, engineers, housekeepers, nutritional service workers, administrative and clinical leaders, and all called to care for our friends and neighbors have done so while risking their own lives and the well-being of their families. And whereas the sick of our community, whether afflicted with the novel coronavirus or suffering with another illness, are treated and tended to by these devoted healthcare workers who surround and support our sick loved ones when family is not allowed by their loved ones bedside. And whereas the city of Eureka recognizes and supports the healthcare workers at St. Joseph Hospital in Eureka. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Eureka does hereby proclaim our appreciation for healthcare workers at St. Joseph Hospital in Eureka. And be it further resolved that the City of Eureka encourages all members of our community to join with us in personally expressing appreciation to the healthcare workers at St. Joseph Hospital for their dedication and commitment to the residents of Eureka and beyond. Yay. I can't really clap, but I can.
Golf clap.
And would you like to say a few words about this?
You know, it's humbling. I'm a fundraiser. I didn't hear fundraisers mentioned in the proclamation, but you know, I get it that our frontline staff made a lot of sacrifices this year, and so we're trying to pour the love on them right now. And so this is particularly meaningful. Appreciate that you guys took the time to to do this, Susan. We're excited to have you visit some of the units with us on on Thursday. And Martha and I are heading up the committee for a three-month campaign to pour the love on our caregivers. So it really means a lot that the city is standing with us in doing that. Thank you so much.
So happy to that you asked us to be part of it. We all celebrate the work that you guys have been doing. And I heard today, zero cases reported today. That was just a great. It's a great thing to see, even if it only lasts for a day, just.
We'll take it. It seems like we're seeing a shift, so we're all, we're obviously all thrilled with that. Knock on wood.
So, and I love that this event is a, you know, a multi-week, multi-month celebration, because it really is more than just a day-long event. You guys are out there every day.
So Mayor? I just wanted to see if Martha wanted to add anything?
I think that Paul summed it up really well. We were in the hospital on Sunday on Valentine's Day rounding and giving little goodie bags and, you know, chocolate hearts and some roses to caregivers, and they were so appreciative. They've been working long hours. It's been stressful. The folks in our emergency rooms, on all the units who are caring for those who have COVID and who have just the other kind of health, the normal kind of healthcare things that we deal with day in and day out, and they've been working so hard. So they, it's so appreciated that we have partners in this and that you all are recognizing the healthcare workers at St. Joe's, and we just want to thank you for doing that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much for coming out today. Anybody at council have anything to add? Or just a big thumbs up from everybody, I think. Right on. And so now I am going to invite Councilmember Castellano to read a proclamation from the National Children's Dental Health Month.
This is the City of Eureka proclamation in recognition of February as National Children's Dental Health Month, February sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Whereas the month of February is National Children's Dental Health Month, and whereas National Children's Dental Health Month is an event that promotes education and awareness, along with our local Smile Humboldt program, highlighting the belief that the power is in your hands to embrace healthy habits and make and keep the dental appointments. And whereas during the COVID nineteen pandemic, it is more important than ever to protect your child's oral health by reinforcing in the home a commitment to the value of oral health by practicing daily preventive dental care. Whereas tooth decay is the most common disease found in children and is avoidable by brushing twice daily for two minutes using fluoridated toothpaste, flossing daily, having routine dental checkups, and eating a diet low in sugary foods and drinks. And whereas during COVID, the COVID nineteen pandemic, local dental offices are following health guidelines to keep everyone safe so that preventive and restorative treatment can continue. And whereas our city support systems, system changes for better access to fluoride varnish, dental sealants, and fluoridated water regardless of income. Whereas the cooperation advocacy demonstrated by the Dental Advisory Group, the Oral Health Leadership Team, and many additional partners who positively impact children represent the strong commitment to meeting the oral health needs of Eureka residents. Now therefore, the Eureka City Council hereby proclaims the month of February two thousand and twenty-one as National Children's Dental Health Month, and calls upon the people of Eureka to use and promote good oral health habits and encourage friends and family to do the same.
And today, yay! We do have Laura McEwen here. I want to add again, we added this last year to our agenda because when I was working on the children's initiative, the access to dental care for children came up time and again as something that's such an impactful. It's, it makes such a difference on kids' well-being. And so since that kept coming up, I got to reach out to Laura and learn about some of the great things they're doing. So thank you, Laura, for coming, and would you like to speak first?
I would. Thank you very much. It's really an honor to be here. I'm the HHS Program Services Coordinator at Public Health, and I oversee our oral health programs, and it's really an honor that you've taken on a proclamation. I want to thank both the Eureka City Council and Mayor Seaman for the proclamation that February is Children's Dental Health Month. Oral health is an important part of overall health. We sometimes forget that. Unfortunately, dental disease is the most common childhood disease, even more common than asthma. The good news is that dental disease is completely preventable with good daily oral hygiene habits, healthy nutrition, and routine dental checkups. We are empowering parents with the belief that the power is in your hands. Through the Smile Humboldt program, we want children of Eureka to grow up into cavity-free adults. Dental offices are currently using best practices to keep clients and staff safe from COVID nineteen. In partnership with the Dental Advisory Group, the Oral Health Leadership Team, and other advocates, we believe in empowering Eureka residents to have the best oral health regardless of income. Thank you for your time today, and thank you for your partnership. It's great to work with you.
Thank you so much for coming out, and I'm glad that we were able to get that in before February ended. Although every month is good dental care month, right? Brush your teeth every month.
Absolutely, every day.
Yeah. Thank you so much. Moving on, we have a few presentations today, some that have been moved on from the previous agenda, and we are going to start with the update from the CSET team, our EPD, and I believe Sergeant LaFrance is here.
Can you hear me? I'm here.
We can.
I'm here with all my friends.
You look so tiny.
Can I share my screen?
Please do.
There we go. Okay, so Mayor, Council, thank you for having me tonight. It's been a busy two thousand and twenty for us, and we have a busy year ahead of us again. And we're looking for, looking beyond two thousand and twenty-one as well. So I decided to call this tonight to CSET two thousand and twenty and beyond. So I'm going to go over five things tonight, but I'm going to try to keep it as short as possible. There's only ten slides. Actually, I have contacts, and we have some slides that show some examples of some programs that we're developing in the mix. So five things. I wanted to just talk about principles of CSET. Some, some council or the public may not be familiar with our unit. Just want to share some of our principles, our foundation to how we operate. The services we've been providing, some data, of course, I'm a data guy, so I have some data for you. Talk about our lead program, that'll be Jeff Davis, who's also on the call, I hope. He'll talk about that real quick, and I'll finish with the SMART program. And I can, I can take any questions after that. So first, first off, I combined all of our, all of our strategies we have, we both, and also our principles, and kind of close them down to four things. So first thing is community partners. We all need each other. This is a community approach. We're just a piece of the puzzle. So the puzzle is much bigger than we are, but we're just a piece of it. Connection, we want to connect all members of the community to reduce the negative impacts and create positive long-term outcomes. Connections with everybody. Accountability, compassion, and outreach. We need to help improve the lives of others while maintaining order in, in the community. So it's a constant balance. You'll hear us talk a lot about accountability and compassion. We balance those constantly. It's not easy. It's very difficult, or try, always trying to strive to find balance with those two. And then underlying cause or correlation, it's truly addressed and prevent crime. We have to look at underlying causes or correlation of crime and disorder, which is often for us is mental illness, addiction, and trauma. And so some of our services, we're still servicing Old Town. It's a part, we have an Old Town officer. We still have a waterfront ranger who's funded through Measure Z, and we also cover our parks. CSET is also focusing on homelessness. We've really expanded into mental health and mental illness with the unhoused, but now during last year, made a major shift also with individuals that are housed. And so if there is a welfare check or a call that possibly has mental health related, CSET, usually the mist officer who specializes in mental illness and is connected to lots of networks with providers, will respond and address that to state patrol from dealing with it, and also we have a lot more time to deal with it. We're still focusing on addiction with the unhoused and also the housed now as well. So if someone, we've had a couple of calls where folks are on the borderline of becoming homeless, and so we still connect those people or hand off with subsidy centers, whatever the need is. COVID nineteen is a major push for us. I think the last presentation we had was April of last year, we talked about our approach with COVID and homelessness. We have done a lot with COVID. We've done a lot with our community partners to addressing COVID nineteen education response. It's really been on the, been on the backs of uplifts, our outreach workers, and also our partners, such as Betty Chin, the mission, and also Free Meal. It's been very important for those. We've also really extended our, our services with DHHS. There's not any branch of that organization we don't work with. If you are positive COVID and homeless, you don't know it yet. So we'll, we will go and we will assist public health in finding that person to, to have, to make sure we can safely isolate them. And so we've been doing it since the start of the pandemic. Someone has to do it, so we know our folks in the streets, so we get the call to do that. Social services, we work a lot with child welfare. If there are kids in the street, which is very, very, very rare. But we also, we get a lot of phone calls from child welfare, from other entities within social services to help them out. Because again, we know people in the streets, we have outside the lost thinking, we have a lot less bureaucracy, we can move things, and behavioral health. It's a, I was just at Semper Irons about an hour ago, because they had someone there that was in crisis, the staff there was unable to de-escalate them. So we went over there, got them calmed down, was able to transport them safely to St. Joseph's Hospital. And community partners, again, Free Meal, Betty Chin, and then the Eureka Rescue Mission has been vital during COVID nineteen. Without them, we would be lost. They have been a huge help to us. So we have seen interactions to CSET down to four officers, one of our rangers retired. And so overall, and one of our officer Ross is in Old Town, is also a training officer, and so again, reduced time in Old Town. So overall, we've reduced coverage in Old Town by twenty-five percent and the ranger position by thirty percent. So even though we've, we've lost positions, we're actually doing more. We've also increased our uplift homeless outreachers, outreach workers from two to four. And again, that's one of those or two of those is funded through Measure Z. That's been a huge help for us, because we do dual response with our outreach workers. We coordinate a lot of services on a daily basis. We really are kind of a unified team of tops and social workers. We've increased our coverage to seven days. So CSET with the four officers, we have seven-day coverage, so we are spread extremely thin. However, we, we also add on to our coverage with our outreach workers, who are also working seven days a week. And I just spoke about the CSET and uplift dual approach. We're hopefully gonna push that even further in the future. That's our goals. So some data for you. So sorry for the acronyms, but it's kind of hard to put everything in a slide without having too many slides. So CFS is Call for Service. That's, so last year, just CSET alone went to two thousand three hundred twenty-four calls for service. Our self-initiated, it was five thousand two hundred forty-six. And that includes when, so say if Officer Swanson here is the primary officer, that's included. And also say if I was the backing officer, that's also included, because it's still time that we're taking to those, those calls. A lot of the time, we'll see patrol will respond to a call, and myself or one of our officers Swanson commonly will actually respond to back them and actually clear them from the call. We'll actually handle the call ourselves because we're better fit for it. So our proactive rate drops by four and a half percent from last year. That's likely due to COVID. We're spending more time addressing certain issues in certain locations. So we're eighty-one percent proactive right now. That means we're actually proactively addressing problems, not being reactionary. CSET is really designed to be proactive, not reactive. So we want that number preferably above seventy-five percent. I prefer, I prefer to about eighty-five percent. But again, realistically, that number's been impacted by COVID, and just the need, and we fill a lot of gaps right now. So mental health-related calls for service, we actually track these, probably not as good as we should. We need to do a better job of that. However, right now, CSET alone is handling thirty percent of all of Eureka Police Department's mental health-related calls. So that's primarily the mist officer and the sergeant handling thirty percent of all mental health-related calls for service in the city. That's a lot. Some stats for you, our misdemeanor felony arrests are down by fifty-six percent. Again, the jail's not taking people. Meth has gone up and heroin's gone down. If you remember the survey data that we released back in April, we showed that meth right now is king on the streets. Forty percent of our homeless said that's what they primarily use. Twenty percent of our homeless say they use heroin. So I'm not surprised by those numbers. Again, if we do come across encampments or property that is left on, in public areas, we can tag those, along with providing multiple service. You know, outreach workers come in, bring other services to them and resources. We do tag that property to also help the accountability portion up to gain compliance. And that was up by about forty percent last, last year compared to two thousand and nineteen. We've cleaned up more encampments by sixty percent last, last year. I'm not sure why that's happening, why we have those numbers are, have drastically gone up, but those are the numbers. Garbage collection, we are almost doing five thousand pounds of trash a month, and that's three percent increase from two thousand and nineteen. We spend a lot of time picking up garbage. It's really a gap filled. No one else is there to do it, so we're gonna do it, has to get done. Mental health holds, we held ninety-one people on mental health holds, slight increase from last year. Again, we're handling thirty percent of all mental health holds for EPD. We are CSET's addressing, and we've done a hundred and eighty-four since two thousand and nineteen. And it's important to note for that number, a lot of the times when we're engaged with someone that's possibly having a mental health crisis, or maybe they need the criteria for a greatly disabled on a mental health hold. However, well, since St. Joe's is so overwhelmed right now, because all the mental health holds go to St. Joe's before they go to Semper Irons, they are completely overwhelmed. Their beds are commonly full. I've seen it anywhere from three mental health holds in the ER up to eleven, and they have twenty beds total. So do the math. They're overwhelmed, so we coordinate a lot with, with, with St. Joe's to make sure that we're gonna bring someone in, they have room, they have time, and if it's not immediate. If someone's in crisis, obviously, they're gonna go regardless, but if we can possibly wait off a day, bring other resources, resources in, we will. Because we don't want to overwhelm St. Joe's because they are extremely overwhelmed. Handoffs to subsidy centers are down by twenty-three percent. So fifty-seven, it's a pretty good number, in my opinion, during COVID. I think one number, one reason for that factor, a lot of our folks on the streets have been housed, the ones that can advocate for themselves, they've gotten housed. The rest on the streets, truly individuals that are unable to advocate for themselves, suffer from significant mental health or addiction issues. Those are the hard cases, so we're down quite a bit. However, we've done a hundred and thirty-one since two thousand and nineteen. It's a pretty good number, in my opinion. Jeff Davis, why don't you take over for the lead program?
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am here tonight to briefly describe the, the lead program, which is the city's diversion program. So it's intended to divert individuals from the criminal justice system for, for minor offenses, and really provides folks with opportunities to, to connect with resources and services. We have aligned it with the restorative justice principles that believes that the offenders also need assistance and seeks to identify what needs to change to prevent future reoffending. So it begins with an officer that observes and confirms a qualifying low-level offense. And then if, if, if enforcement action is taken, then this is an opportunity of, of, this is presented as a voluntary opportunity. So there's non-course, it's a volunteer opportunity to sign up for this program. And what happens is that citation is really put on hold. And then they, the, the individual, the offender would be connected with one of our uplift, our diversion coordinator. And the, the first meeting is just kind of an assessment, just kind of identifying what the needs are, kind of what the, the goals are, and really what, what some of the issues are that, that led this, this individual to, in, in the, in the particular place that they're in at the time. So during that first, you know, the first meeting, it's just really getting to know the, the the individual and making that connection, really CSET and uplift are all about, you know, the connections. And then, so during the follow-up sessions, we have, we do assessments, there's action plans are created. And really, the, the end, the end goals on, on most of these are housing. So if they, if someone signs up for this, this program, we really work with them to, to help them obtain, you know, identification, birth certificates, social security cards, all of the documents that are necessary to sign up for, sign up for housing choice vouchers. And just really get, get folks in a, in a better place. And hopefully, after this is all said and done, folks are better off in, in a better place after completing this program. So that after each, each session, each, each case is, is really based around that individual's unique sets of, of needs. And we've, we're off to a pretty good start. There's, the, the folks that do stick with it and, and, and come back and, and are, are really invested in this program have been doing quite a bit. We're working with, with folks on whatever their goals are. So right now, we're working with folks on, on those documents, obtaining housing, obtaining employment. And it's really meant to, yeah, divert folks from the, the criminal justice system and, and put them in a, in a better place. We have folks right now that are getting signed up for social security, I'm sorry, social security information, CalFresh benefits, health, health health services, and especially during, during COVID, we're, we're providing connections and, and resources that, you know, that really didn't exist beforehand. So I want to thank you all for, for, for hearing me out tonight, and I'll, I'll, I'll stick around and we'll be available for, for questioning afterwards.
All right, thanks, Jeff. And so the last section before questions, we're gonna talk about the SMART program. We've been looking at different ways of progressive policing, as I think CSET and uplift have kind of really kind of for here locally, we've done, I think, we're doing a good job on looking at what the community needs and wants and kind of fill gaps, but also moving forward for the future. And so the SMART program is given as a concept we have right now, we're looking at grant funding. We've already talked to some possible community partners with this. But it's a, it's a multiple approach to issues or individuals. And so really, the, it's called the Strategic Mobile Alternative Response Team. That's, that's the name we have right now. Doesn't mean it can't change, but that's the, the general name we have for this. It's gonna be the, the general vision that we're gonna, we want to enhance CSET and uplift with mental health and physical health professionals. So the real intent is to reduce calls for service, but we really want streamlined services. Again, if you remember from the, the long list of principles for CSET is to, is to cut the red tape. We really want streamlined services to individuals from point A to point Z, not waste our time, not, you know, fifteen, twenty minutes. Sometimes we don't have that. We want to streamline as quickly as we can. We want to continue using the non-traditional response to calls for service, proactively engage individuals in the field. And these are people who suffer from mental health disorders, addiction, physical health problems, and those who are homeless. If you remember the survey also, around sixty percent of our homeless say they were self-reported, they have mental health issues, addiction issues, and then more than, I think it's fifty-four percent said they have physical health issues. So those are three major problems with our, within our homeless population. This has also helped us fill the service gaps, which there are many. Address needs and divert from other resources, ability to increase our three hundred sixty-degree approach. Because again, there's no one solution. We need every solution on the table, not the one, not one solution's the gospel. And the team, the team is built for checks and balances. We're providing for safety of the team while providing wraparound services, working towards long-term solutions. So the general idea that the SMART program or SMART team would be a collaboration of four separate entities. One would be law enforcement, which would likely be CSET, and that could be the mist officer, it could be a new SMART officer, it could be whoever wanted to design that. Again, it's someone who's kind of, who has understanding of this program, understands the special, the delicacy of the individuals we deal with, understanding of the networks and the resources that we need. Also has the uplift outreach workers, which provide the social service side of things. Mental health professionals such as a health licensed clinical social worker, a marriage and family therapist, someone who has a master's in social work, or someone who has extensive experience or experience with, with mental health. And is able to work with individuals suffering crisis, or just someone who suffers from a mental health disorder. And also a physical health professional such as a nurse practitioner, a nurse, a paramedic, or EMT. The reason when we look at this team is having a nurse practitioner, is they can prescribe medication. So if we have someone on the street who is, who is who has a mental health disorder, but has been out of medication for a while, if they can prescribe the medication, which, which is, which would make streamlined services, we're actually able to put them in a vehicle with one of our outreach workers or one of our CSET officers, drive them to Walgreens or Clonies, get their medication, pay for it, and do follow-up work with them as well. So we're cutting out St. Joe's, we're cutting out Semper Irons from it. We're bringing the facilities straight to the person in the field, and then walking through the process with them to make sure they're, they're being stabilized. Again, last for a three hundred sixty-degree approach. It could be from any direction. It could be a proactive approach in the field from, you know, if you had a nurse practitioner in the field, they proactively engage somebody down at Free Meal. They say, well, I need someone else to come in and assist me, or hey, this person's in crisis, I don't feel safe, we need to call in an officer. It could be from any direction. This is very, meant to be very, very flexible. So it could be single, it could be a proactive or reactive approach. We're called to, to the scene, or we engage someone proactively. It could be a dual approach, like we use right now with CSET and uplift, where we, we are, we go respond to a location together, or we respond to talk with someone together. It could be threefold, where three of the separate entities respond together, or it could be all-in, that we know this person has multiple needs, need to have everyone there that have a stable environment, a safe environment to work in, and they all respond together. Any combination can be used, resources can move in and out. So say if someone's in crisis, law enforcement, we respond initially, we stabilize and make it safe, and we bring in our mental health professionals. Once everything's okay, we can back away. And they say, wow, they actually have medical problems, let's bring in our physical health specialist. Okay, we're good there. Let's bring in the housing specialist. So really, we can use any kind of dynamics to kind of do a wraparound service. And also the ability to bring in like a physical health professional and a mental health professional, that expands our networks to other services as well. And so this is a general diagram, I mean, I, we designed to kind of show how this works. These are the last couple of slides before questions. So again, we have an individual or an incident, someone's in need or in crisis. We can bring in an uplift, you know, say uplift contacts a person, they're, work with them and say, ah, we need something else, it's not, it's not safe right now. They're, they're getting to the point, they may harm somebody or the uplift worker, you know, they safely back out, but we, we bring in a CSET officer to kind of help de-escalate things. And then we slowly, we can bring in other resources as well. So mental health and then physical health. And the exact reverse, we can start pulling people out of, out of the scenario. And so the idea is to be as dynamic as possible, because again, no one solution is the, is the only solution. We need every single approach. When you truly get to know people on the streets, they have so many different underlying issues going on. We need all the different approaches, in my opinion. When you truly get to know people on the streets, they have so many different underlying issues going on, we need all the different approaches, in my opinion. And again, that's just a general concept of that of that program. We are looking at grant, grant funding. The organization we talked to actually really likes the program because it's going to save them in the in the long run, a lot of customers at their at their doorstep. Instead, they can deal with them in the field or interact with the field and really kind of go upstream on those issues. There's a lot more to it, but again, that's just the general concept. And myself and Jeff can answer any questions you guys have about about any of the program or about CSET or uplift.
Does anybody have any questions? Councilmember Castellato, councilmember Bergel?
Just, just real quick. I, I mean firstly, thank you, and and I'm really excited about all of it. And then the quick question is, just in terms of recruiting mental health professionals, you know, I've heard that's really difficult through the entire county. Do we have strategies for that? Is that something that we need to do kind of larger advocacy around just that in general?
I think our initial approach, just in the meeting we had last week, myself, Jeff, and the in the organization, is that if we could use the same organization for both mental health and physical health, that would probably prime. However, that is a concern, is finding it, finding an LSW or an MFT is really difficult right now. You know, and obviously, if this is a long-term program that, you know, if we continue this program, you know, set it in place in stone, I think recruiting would be pretty easy. Because we know a lot of people that clinicians that work with us from other other agencies actually love work. Seem to very, very much enjoy working with us, the way the city kind of streamlined services, we cut bureaucracy. My guess would be we probably have a pretty good applicant pool, if we had it set in stone moving forward. As we're looking at the grant, though, it may be a little more difficult, but again, I think the key for us is the the organization we talk to. If they can provide both, that'd be the the best thing for us. Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, I think I I think you you nailed it on that one. It's just, yeah, reaching out to an organization, working with an organization that already has an established system of care and and relying on on staff members from within that organization.
Councilmember Bergel?
I'm curious, have we implemented this program yet, or is this still in its infancy stages?
So we are still infancy. Again, we're still talking with organizations. I think Jeff is still working on the on the grant portion of this, to fund this, fund this. So we're just just getting started.
Okay. And then can we make comments now, or should we just do questions?
No, you can do comments. We're not, it's a report, so.
Well, I just wanted to say that I'm really grateful and appreciative that we have this restorative justice happening. That is happening, right? Yes. I think that is such an opportunity for people to have a different way to move through the things that they're working through. And I'm just so thankful for that opportunity for people. It's just, you know, instead of going to jail or thinking you're worthless, you have people that actually support you and want you to do well, and I really appreciate that. And I, I appreciate the compassionate and dedicated approach that you both and your teams have. It it clearly, it shows through in everything. And lastly, that photo of Ethan and, oh, doggone it, I can't think of his name right now, and then gagging on, beautiful, you guys.
MJ, Kim, it's MJ.
MJ, of course, it's MJ. You guys killed it, and you're you're just awesome. So thank you so much. And last thing, I appreciate that you're continuing, like even though we have successful programs, you're con- continuing to think outside the box and to move forward even, even, you know, as we speak. So thank you so much.
Any other comments or questions for Sergeant LaFrance or for, yeah, councilmember Bauer?
Sorry, I have to shut up my video, so. It's bad wifi, but um, I want to thank you guys for the work you're doing. It's great stuff. I guess I want to know what the, how much funding or about this? Do we have long-term, stable funding for this program? And and what you're trying to accomplish with SMART? And if not, what do we need to do to help, you know, ensure that we keep this program running and and expand upon it?
So yeah, currently, staff is is looking out and identifying funding sources for the the SMART program. So we have not secured, our staff has not secured that that funding yet, but there are multiple grant opportunities that staff has identified. And we were moving forward with that at this point.
And I'll chime in a little bit there. I think that both CSET and Uplift have been very, very successful at getting grant funding and especially for kind of pilot programs that are starting off. We've gotten funding for those and continued to get funding after those pilot program, programs have proved successful. And so we're hoping the same model can be applied here where we started off, demonstrate the benefit to those other agencies and continue to get grant funding moving forward.
Anything else? Well, we always look forward to your presentations, and it's always so great when other people get to see and hear the stuff that you do. I was just doing a presentation to Rotary this morning, and I said, if you want to feel great about the city you live in, tune in tonight, because you'll get to hear these guys talk. And it is very impressive, makes us very proud. Councilmember Bergel?
Does the chief have his hand up?
Oh. Chief Watson.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. I just wanted to also add, even though the city manager, for instance, has discussed the robust pursuing of grants and some successes we've had and we expect to have, and we're still trying to sort out these kind of details. A big part of the foundation of CSET and Uplift is Measure Z grant funding. And it's been, you know, we're we're proud of the program that's been built, starting with MIST and has grown into the uplift CSET partnership with DHHS and our other community partners today. It's one of the longest-standing programs out there, arguably has amongst, if not the most successful outcomes in a very pressing, you know, crisis that we have. And that Measure Z support funding for homeless outreach workers and coordinators and MIST officer and Parks Rangers, and the list goes on, has been immensely valuable and has really served as a foundation that has us in a place today where we, you know, really are going to go full court press to move forward with the SMART program, which I think we owe the city manager some, some kudos, one for his level of support and initiative with this. And I think he came up with the name as well, at least a preliminary name. So two shout-outs to both the Measure Z board of supervisors and the Measure Z committee and and the city manager.
Yeah, I I didn't come up with the name. I had a different name and I got shot down. And actually, I believe the chief actually laughed at the name that I came up originally with, so I won't bring it up.
Well, that is a form of helping.
Thank you, chief. Councilmember Arroyo?
I just want to echo the appreciation, but specifically note that, you know, this was, the SMART program was really something that I think the community was really asking us to do and to look into and to implement. And, you know, several of us heard that and staff really made it happen. So thank you to staff for being like, quick and responsive and figuring out how we could do something like that. And thank you to the community members for pointing out the programs in Eugene and Colorado and elsewhere that are that are working well and, you know, kind of, you know, just just helping across the board. So I think it's a great example of, you know, I'm I'm ready to back it however we can. And I think it's a great example of the city looking to meet what residents are asking for. And thank you to the departments involved to, you know, work on getting this off the ground. And and to EPD for being open to trying something different and a different approach. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Are we ready to move on to our next presentation? Now, I would like to welcome back Jennifer Eddy and Bob Gilbert and Emily Kirsch from Eddie Alexander. Last time, last meeting, they gave us a presentation about what they've been working on, and then we ran out of time before we could have discussion about it. So I understand. Jennifer, you're going to give us a brief synopsis of what happened last time and then allow council to ask questions.
Yes, that's absolutely right. So thank you, guys, for for having me back tonight. I appreciate it. I feel lucky to get a little extra time to to not only, you know, share with you what we've been doing, but hopefully to hear from you, you know, where your vision is and and how you want to see us moving forward. So last time, we presented, for those that weren't here, we sort of went over some of the research that was guiding our decision-making as we navigate through these turbulent times as it relates to tourism, but as it relates to community services and various events and activities that we hope to return to some level of normalcy here as we climb out of the pandemic. We also talked about some of our plans, some of the things that were on hold, some of the things that were ongoing, kind of behind the scenes. And then several programs we've been working on, the Dine Out Eureka program, the Shop Eureka program and radio ads, some of the communications efforts for citizens during the pandemic, the weekly mayor's videos and some of that. We also talked a little bit about some of the beautification and wayfinding efforts that are underway. And we've actually even seen some great milestones get passed in the last two weeks since we presented. So we're really excited to to have folks start to see some of that new signage and branding start to pop up as we all kind of come out of our homes and our lockdown postures and start to spend more time outside as that is allowable. We've also been working on a lot of kind of industrialization of what we can do to be more efficient. So building photo libraries, building ad libraries, things like that, so that when we can deploy some of the things that were originally planned for this year, that we can do so in a really efficient and effective way. So with all of that, you know, we're happy to share out the deck that we walked through last time, about two weeks ago, with anybody who's interested. And I know council has had a chance to hear us present on it, but also to take a look at it. So if it's okay with you, Mayor Seaman, I'd like to just pull up that last slide that sort of says what we're looking to do, what we can do immediately, what we're looking to do as soon as we can, and then what's sort of further a flung, but very much on our radar, so that we can get council's questions and feedback. And, you know, just do a gut check that we're focused in the areas you want us focused on.
That sounds fine. Is she able to share screen, Assistant City Manager Pal? All right, just go ahead and put it up.
Okay, can you see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Okay, I will turn it over to you all.
All right. Does anybody have any questions or comments for any of the Eddie Alexander group?
Could you possibly put it in present mode or, it's a little hard to see?
Yes, let's see here. I think this is a PDF, so let me see.
Oh, I see, okay.
Maybe could I make it bigger and then scroll across? Will that work? Probably not here. I'm happy to read through any of the sections that might be a little hard to see.
I have, I have a couple of comments that I was saving from last time.
Well, that's, that was the point.
Okay. Um, I think just in general, I I, you know, in response to your question about kind of a gut check, yeah, I think we're, we're on the right track. This, this, this lands well with what I was thinking we'd be focused on. I do really appreciate that you've been working with some of the folks who are working on like beautification efforts and and, yeah, the the kind of collaborative work that you've been doing. And I wanted to just bring up a couple of, a couple of things that folks have have asked me to be involved in or that I'm involved in right now, so you're aware of them. And then maybe we can talk more offline just about it. But the city of Eureka and Humboldt Transit Authority are are going through initial planning to replace some of the bus shelters with something that's like really cool-looking, but also has space for not advertising, but like art and then our own messaging around wayfinding. And I know that there's some like wayfinding projects going on right now anyway. And so as that comes to fruition, there will likely be space inside those bus shelters for people who are using transit to orient to like attractions in the city or for passersby to see that. So I just wanted you to know that that was coming. And the council will get an update from Humboldt Transit Authority's general manager soon with more details. But I'm hopeful that that space could be a place to put some of our messages around, you know, wayfinding and such. And then I was curious if I've been seeing all of these online like tours where it's basically like a, a tour of a place online that that you're not able to go during the pandemic. So a little different from a fam tour, but basically people everywhere can just like do a live tour. You know, I think you know what I'm talking about. Is that the kind of, have we explored things like that during this time?
Yeah, so we've, it's a great question and and something we're pretty excited about. There's a number of different ways to go about doing that. There's a, there's a number of different assets that have been created by community organizations already that we've been looking at ways we can partner and amplify that. Sort of take things that have already been community projects and amplify them rather than create something new. So that's one way we're looking at it. We're also looking at themed interaction points. Primarily, you mentioned fam tours primarily for media interactions, but those would be publicly accessible as well. So videos that talk about the the food scene in Eureka and the amazing restaurants and dining experiences you can have here. Ones that talk about, you know, interest in the outdoors and different recreational activities you can do when you visit the city. So providing these sort of prepackaged stories that have video content, that have sort of maps and places and things to go and people to talk to when you're in town. This allows people to plan their visit. It allows locals to explore areas of the community that maybe they don't visit on a day-to-day basis or think about. So you can have sort of this vacation experience in your own town. And then we've been looking at ways to keep that going beyond the pandemic. So making virtual walking tours and ways that we can integrate that with some of the wayfinding efforts around the community. A lot of the tracking work we're doing with the cellphone data is starting with understanding where people are going right now, where we want them to go, where there are opportunities to give them more great experiences while they're here. And all of that is is an opportunity to integrate. So I'm really excited to hear about the bus shelters and to get involved in any ways that make sense. That's, that's really great. And then I'm hoping that perhaps if if time allows, that we might be able to bring Emily back sometime in the next few months to go a little bit deeper into some of the wayfinding efforts that are underway. There's some really neat work that's been done there and, you know, I'm sure she'll be excited to to share that and show it off a little bit.
Councilmember Castellano?
Hi there. Thanks, thanks for coming back. And thanks for all of your work. Just a couple of things. One, I'm really excited that you're going to be doing these, you know, kind of highlights of artists and businesses and community organizations. And just to put it out there, you know, we have so many great volunteers in our community that really love Eureka and I think are great spokespeople for Eureka and do so much. And if it makes sense, I think it would be great to kind of highlight some of those folks as well. And then you're probably already aware, but, you know, just in the last week, last Thursday, I believe it was announced that there's going to be a direct flight to Arizona now. And so it seems like, of course, there's, there's a new market. I'm sure you're already thinking about it. And it it's such a delicate thing, but I do think that there's a place for, you know, like, how do we engage with people who are planning trips for next winter or next spring? And, you know, like, like, are there ways to? It's, you know, something I think about, like, how's the best way to engage with people to like, kind of participate in their dreaming about their, you know, upcoming vacation? Because if anyone's like me, I know that people are like, as soon as I can, or one day I'm going to, you know, go on a trip again, and it's going to be great. And so, you know, I want to make sure that Eureka is on their, part of, part of their dreamscape. You know, especially with all the beautiful outdoor places. And then just because I know that Keep Eureka Beautiful is here and presenting next, I I do feel like, you know, if you haven't had a chance to connect with Keep Eureka Beautiful, I think it's a great organization that would be good to connect with, just in terms of that kind of beautification and street trees. And, you know, obviously, it's a group of people who are really passionate about the well-being of Eureka. And so I think that could be an opportunity to maybe present at one of the meetings or just get to know those folks better too. That's all I have.
So I love the idea of pulling volunteers in. So um I love the idea of pulling volunteers in for the videos. So um for those of you who might not have been participating last go around, um one of the things that we. Are are talking about doing as we're sort of moving out of the pandemic, fingers crossed for everyone, that um. You know, Mayor Seaman and and many of you on council have been great about keeping um everyone up to date with weekly videos, and. We want to start to transition um those communications to show a broader um breadth of the community and and how everyone's been doing and what everyone. Is doing um in this moment as we sort of transition into the next phase of whatever is ahead for all of us. Um so we had identified business owners, um artists and. Frontline workers to sort of tell their stories about what they have been doing and what they're focused on next and how they plan to um to chart the path ahead. And I love the idea of bringing volunteers into that. So Leslie, thank you for um sharing that, Councilmember Castellano. Additionally, I think you were um you were talking about Keep uh Keep Eureka Beautiful. We have had a chance to. Work with them um about a year ago on a small project. We're really very open and very excited to work with them on some bigger things. So if that opportunity. To engage is uh is on the table, we're very into that. Um and then in terms of being on the radar, so you'll see here on our um. Chart, our marketing plan priorities, um we are thinking about this welcome back campaign and how we might do that. We're very sensitive to. Not only people's safety and comfort level with traveling, but just as importantly, maybe more importantly, local comfort with inviting folks in. And so we're watching. Very, very carefully the um the sentiment in both directions and the safety metrics in both um directions. So. Couple of weeks ago, when we were here, we were showing this map that kind of looks like a roller coaster going like this, right? And that. What we're looking for is those lines to do a certain thing. Um that tells us the market is ready for that. And actually, since the last time we presented, we've come much closer. People's comfort level with traveling has gone down, or the the people who are comfortable, the levels are where they were at the beginning of the pandemic before it got really crazy. So. We're getting there, um and that's that's really exciting. Um maybe just as exciting is that the city has a story to tell. That's authentic. It's not just come back, we need you, but you have a redwood skywalk that you're getting ready to launch. And. Despite how crazy the last year has been, the timing couldn't be perfect to go out with a really meaningful story. And the value proposition of coming and experiencing that um new exhibit at the zoo and that that new experience really. Is couldn't be better because folks are looking for unique things to do in smaller locations. That maybe aren't the traditional vacation spots, but they are ready to travel again. I think we're seeing about fifty percent of um folks nationwide are thinking about what their travel destination is going to be as soon as they can travel. So they're starting to make plans. For this year. Um doesn't mean they're necessarily booking yet, but they're but they're thinking about it and they're they're ready to. Um and that's that's a good sign that the market will come back. Additionally, we're seeing that there are nuances to that. So um while many people are starting to feel comfortable, maybe you know people that have already gotten their two vaccines, two rounds of vaccinations. I know. It seems like in the last two weeks, everybody I know is getting vaccinations except for me so far, but um. But um we are, you know, we're all excited about that as that level of confidence comes up across the community groups and the people we all interact with. Even virtually, that starts to change people's perception and comfort level. Um but we are hearing that children are going to get vaccinated probably, you know, later in the spring. Late spring, early summer timeframe. And if that stays on track, that's going to have a second phase. So we may see people start to travel. But not families quite as yet, quite as quickly as um make the rebound a little bit more. Terms of the tours I get. So we're watching all of that really closely. I think um. The good news is we have a story to tell that's authentic. We don't have to just sort of wave a flag and say, please come visit us. We can say we've got something really great that's worth visiting. That offers an opportunity to visit in a really safe and responsible way during this transitional moment. So that's um, that's the good news. And then we are also. Working really closely with um the Eureka Lodging Alliance, Humboldt Lodging Alliance, the zoo and community services. Um and the Zoo Foundation on this grand opening plan, and we're already getting some really significant media hits and interest in um in this program um and this launch. So. We're kind of doing all the planning and waiting until the COVID situation allows for us to um, you know, to settle on the date for the grand opening event, but we are. Poised and ready, and um I think everybody's ready for the pandemic to be over. But in terms of the marketing plan, um we're sort of itching to go, but don't want to get ahead of things either.
Any other questions? If not, I'm sure we're going to hear from you guys again. Um I am looking forward to Emily coming back and talking about some of the way. Oh, does Miles have something? Oh, he's saying goodbye to. Um, we're looking forward to hearing about the wayfinding and we will have you back um before you know it, because hopefully next year will not be as long as this year.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to present. Of course, if there's any additional questions, please reach out.
I know I know I know how to find you, so. All right. We will go ahead and move on to um our last presentation uh. For this section, and I see Michelle McKeegan from Keep Eureka Beautiful is um here, and she looks raring to go. So I am excited to hear you guys have a big project coming up. Why don't you tell us all about it and whatever else you have are here to share about Keep Eureka Beautiful? Oh, and me.
Lady Mayor and Council, uh we do have an exciting project coming up. We will be planting forty-three trees. On the sidewalks surrounding the Eureka Inn on Saturday morning, and this is an iconic building that. You Euricans love, and I think it will be a really important piece of our kickoff of a major drive to get more trees in downtown and Old Town, what what is designated the. Cultural Arts District. This is actually a re-kickoff because of the COVID. Lockdown kind of interrupted our last one. Um but I wanted to invite the council and community members to participate and bring shovels and and masks and gloves and. Meet in front of the inn at nine a nine AM on this coming Saturday. Just a reminder that we have five property owners on Fourth and Fifth who are just waiting for the go ahead to um be able to plant there. And I I wanted to bring up a concern that we have uh about the Eureka Broadway Multi Mode Modal Corridor Plan. Which is slated to be adopted by um the Humboldt County Association of Governments. This coming Thursday, and I we have major concerns about this. It it doesn't, it barely mentions beautification. I think we, most of us were at the um the workshops that that preceded this, and. There's a lot of concern about beautification at that uh workshop. Um some of it just negative, people saying, oh, it's such an ugly place. Bradley, um so this plan um does not virtually does not mention, I I think maybe on page thirty-eight, it. Refers to trees, but but it is not in there anywhere else. There's no mention of, it's just lumped in with other issues at what in terms of. Saying what people were concerned about. Um and and we, I know this does not re- reflect the um council's position on on beautification. I I know that it's a concern. It's part of. Our strategic plan uh for the city and. And um I really hope that we can uh when the mayor goes to this meeting on Thursday to. Adopt this um plan, that we can make a uh some major objections to, a major objection to it in terms of. Of no mention of beautification. If it's not in the plan, that Caltrans tends to say, well, we'll, that's under other issues, you know. And or we'll do that later. But if it's not in the plan, it's not going to get done. Uh and and so I, we can't throw it in at the end if there's a little bit of money left over. So. I hope that we will um say that we want more uh somehow more attention to um. Beautification from the uh in terms of that plan. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Uh does he maybe have questions or comments?
I have a comment if I could.
No, I'm I'm sorry, only council couldn't give comments. We'll have you at a community comment will be coming up shortly though. Um, does council have anything for uh Michelle? Councilmember Bregel.
So Michelle, I just want to thank you and Keep Eureka Beautiful. You guys just really do so much for our city, and I don't think you get enough recognition. And um. I appreciate you bringing up the HCOG plan too. I I agree if it's not in the plan. Um for me, this has been a real frustrating thing with Fourth and Fifth Street and the trees. It's ridiculous. Though, always talking about a path forward. I'm done walking. It's like talking gets old, but thank you, Michelle.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Castellano.
I don't know if this is a good time for that or not, but I would definitely be supportive of. Letting HCOG know that, you know, the city of Eureka would like beautification included more prominently in that plan. Um. Are other council members on board with that?
If we could get a consensus, I'd be happy to pass that on. I just, I don't want to speak for the council without a consensus. I'll certainly pass on uh. Michelle's, but if I get thumbs up, I will say that the council is in consensus that they would like to see that added to the plan. Thank you very much. Uh Councilmember Royal.
Thank you. I was curious about um the current street tree list. I've had some um. Some questions about, and this, you know, this is as much to our staff because I know it's a a list that the city created. So I'm wondering if there's any. Process in motion of updating that list, or um, you know, there's some trees that last I looked that were on it that maybe aren't the best fit for us here. Any thoughts about that, Michelle or Miles?
Sure, Michelle would like to speak first.
Yeah, there are some, well, first of all, the city's list is actually immense. Uh the city tree plan has a list of. Acceptable trees. It is very long and and is very good. Um I think the problem comes from the uh the little brochure. That that lists some trees that really aren't like pine trees that that aren't really appropriate. Um and I think it's just a matter of of. Updating that brochure. What do you think, Ms.?
Yeah, I think we have a street tree master plan council member Royal that was created, help me, Michelle, two thousand ten, eleven, twelve, somewhere around there. And it has a very long exhaustive list of trees. I think for the sake of brevity that um certain trees were picked from that and put into the pamphlet. I think it'd be as simple as going back to that street tree master plan and replacing some of those trees with different trees that are approved in the street tree master plan.
Yeah, my other, that sounds like a great plan moving forward. I'm sorry, Michelle, go ahead.
No, 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 I agree.
Okay, that sounds like a good next step. And then I um I'm interested to know, um I know. I know when I was more involved in street tree planting, a lot of times people would want all the same trees as their neighbors, and there's some concerns around tree health. And pests and vulnerability to pests when there's dozens of the same trees. So I wondered, um what's the current thinking about how to? You know, make sure there are diverse species of trees.
Well, the um the prevailing uh. Measure of that is that you don't want to have more than twenty-five percent of your tree stock to be one tree. You don't want to have what happened in the Midwest with the Elms. And so far, I think we're doing okay. We we, there are certainly trees that people prefer in Eureka and and um we could. You can get kind of bogged down in those. On on the other hand, it really looks quite lovely when you have a whole street, you know, with one tree. So. So I I guess we can just keep our eyes on that and 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 try not to go over that twenty-five percent mark because I I certainly agree with it.
Great. Oh, I did have one more thing I just remembered. That was in, it's something I've been thinking about for a while, and I'd love to see um some. Consideration of it, but the um the idea of landscape strips. So currently, um I believe, you know, folks. It's pretty straightforward how to get a street tree, but it's not always straightforward about how to remove um squares in the sidewalk or portions of sidewalk if you'd like to plant. Other plants. Um I know people do it, but it's not always the clearest about how to how to do it. I've actually. Kind of half-heartedly tried and it was hard. Um but I I'm curious to know if there's interest in that, like in the community that you've heard to. To pull up more more sidewalk where where it's wide enough to plant um. Like flowers or, you know, native red flower and currant or things like that. I would love to see us explore that, though.
Good idea. I know I don't, I you know, so people, when people call us, it's about trees and so, but I, that would be lovely.
So yeah, Councilmember Royal, the the prevailing mission of Keep Eureka Beautiful has been trees. Um I know that they've been solicited in the past for landscaping and stuff like that, but they've pretty much stuck to trees. We could have more conversations with staff and see if there's an agency out there that could help with that. Um, you know, we still offer up the. Hundred dollars per hole for Keep Eureka Beautiful, so most likely have to be something along with them, but we can have more discussions about it.
Okay, yeah, that'd be interesting to pursue just because it seems like if folks are, yeah, there's some possible benefits to offer to having different kinds of. Plant species available that are a little more low lying in some areas. So. Anyway, thank you. I'd love to work more on that.
Any other, uh Councilmember Bauer?
I'll I'll be real quick. I just want to say, Michelle, thank you and, you know, the whole Keep Eureka Beautiful crew for doing what you do. Um. You know, I was just thinking about Second Street, some of the trees. Um it looks like they're, you know, they're just getting old, or maybe. Maybe they're just, you know, too big for the britches in the sidewalk there. Like, what's the plan for us to replace trees that they just don't look that healthy? And I'd love to see new new trees on on Second there. What's the, what's our plan to to do a replacement?
I'm I'm going to punt that to Miles.
The Councilmember Bauer, what we typically do is we look for the health of the trees and and evaluate those and make sure that they're healthy. Some of the trees that have outgrown their locations, we've tried to find creative ways of fixing it, like on I Street between. Fifth and Sixth Street, we opened up the tree wells to nine feet um to to nine by nine as opposed to the typical three by three. Typically, what we do is if it's an if it's a health issue, then we'll have staff remove it, you know, if a limb's down or something like that, and then we'll typically work with Keep Eureka Beautiful for a replacement of that. Or if there are sidewalk issues or infrastructure issues, um we will put it as a part of our sidewalk improvement project. And we'll once again work with Keep Eureka Beautiful and help pick out a tree and we'll remove that tree and then replace it with something different. I don't know if there's any bay trees still along there, but the bay trees have been something that we've kind of gone, you know, tried to get rid of. They they bulb out over the um the existing wells. And so we've, we have been kind of periodically replacing those trees, but those have been the main ones. Some of the other ones that we've tried to accommodate either by opening up the hole or. Finding some alternative way of keeping the tree there. As long as it's healthy.
Thanks.
Any other comments or questions? I am looking forward to seeing you on Saturday.
Yes.
Ray Muschott.
More conference at ten. We'll have lots of luminaries, including Susan.
Um it is going to change that whole area to have those trees added. It's um going to make the Grand Hotel even more grand. So. We are looking forward to seeing you. Thank you so much for coming.
You're welcome.
All right. And this is the part of the agenda that I usually have where I tell you that I forgot something. Um I opened up my agenda and it flew across the room. And Councilmember Bregel let me know that I did forget to do a report out of uh close session. So. Mr. City Attorney Black, is there anything to report out from closed session?
Madam Mayor, there is, there were no final actions taken in closed session, no reportable actions.
Thank you very much. Um she also pointed out that we uh forgot to do the pledge of allegiance, and since she. Was the one who noticed it, I'm going to ask her to lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight in the middle of the. And since she was the one who noticed it, I'm going to ask her to lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight in the middle of the meeting.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody. And we're back on track. And it, now it is time for public comment period. So this time, this is a time, Mr. Glavich, that we would love to hear from you. Public comments are three minutes long. And Assistant City Manager Pam Powell will let you know when the um, time is ending with a hand up at thirty seconds or a minute, thirty seconds, and then a fist for when uh, your time is up. And we will go ahead and start with you, Mr. Powell.
Get that timer going. The city has three main streets, Broadway, Fourth Street and Fifth Street. Yet all of the Fifth and the Fourth Street are problematic areas. Um, they continue to be a problem with, um, without any improvement for the last fourteen years that I've been in business in Eureka. We have Main Street that has, uh, that has nothing to do with the main streets of town. Our window was broken last night to our building costing us another thousand plus dollars. This is after we had the police come out and talk to us about how to improve the safety of the building, which ended up talking about costing us another several hundreds of thousands of, or several hundred, several thousands of dollars. This is also after the thousands of dollars that we put in during the pandemic to make the minimal safety for our guests and coworkers. Even though we are, are supposed to have more patrol, somehow our window was broken and nobody informed us until nine AM the next day. There's a problem here. In regards to Keep Eureka Beautiful, we've had a six-year situation going with the city and Caltrans blaming each other for not giving us the Main Street trees. To my astonishment and disgust, Fourth Street got trees for their part. Spaces were dug into the front of the courthouse on Fourth Street and boxes on Fourth Street next to the crematorium are filled with plants as well. I've watched Rita's on Fifth have trees that have grown three times the size when I moved in in two thousand and ten. There is a problem here. Without warning, the maintenance of Eureka closed down the entire back parking lot of our business on Sunday without telling us for the entire day. They said it was basically that they had maintenance, that they had not checked. It was just on their calendar. So they didn't know if it needed to be maintenance, to which it did not. It would be nice if the city told us within like twenty-four hours that they were planning on closing down the parking lot that so many people use in our area. I think that the streets should be pristine and draw people in because they're, they are the only thing that some people see passing through our town. Fourth and Fifth Street and Broadway are the in and out of Eureka. This is a disservice that the entire council doesn't realize and has for the last, uh, how many years not done anything to really beautify that area. Three main streets of Eureka. Whomever has been causing these contract issues with Caltrans for multiple years now, stop at the pissy match so that we can get right to the, like, what will improve the city? It's getting really old. And hearing councilmembers ask about a second set of trees that when we haven't even had ours the first time is very, very, very inappropriate. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. And, and Assistant City Manager Powell, do you want me to just, I'm going to actually ask you if you have a list? And if not, I'll just start calling on people that I don't recognize.
I, I do have a couple of people that I was able to correspond with. I don't know if the public knows this, but our email has been very um, intermittent today. And so I didn't get everyone. But I do know that Denise Goslin uh, online is waiting to speak during public comment.
All right, I saw her and then I also have heard from Janelle Egger. So we'll get her later.
And then, there's, yeah, and then there's Lost Coast Camp Nou Karate. And uh, there's one more too, but those are the four that I'm.
And Tara?
Yes.
Now Heather McCoy. All right, so we are going to start with Denise Goslin.
Okay, sorry, I forgot my sound.
You're good.
Okay, um, I can't see Pam, so just tell me when to go.
Can you see me?
No, hold on, let me. Okay, I can see you.
Okay, I will be Pam then. I'll watch her.
Okay, I found Pam. I just had to scroll through. Sorry, this is the first time doing this. Go ahead. Okay, thank you. My name is Denise Goslin. My family has been in Humboldt for several generations. I'm a third-generation small business owner here. I started my first business here when I was nineteen. The amazing support for our local community has allowed me to stay here and build a family in a great quality of life. Over the years, I'm, our local government has prided itself in keeping big boxes out of here and advocating for small businesses. Where are those people now? Small businesses are getting destroyed thanks to a virus with a ninety-nine point eight percent survival rate. We've all been sitting here patiently for a year following all of these guidelines where our local government is doing nothing to help the small businesses. My son's karate teacher is now receiving a five hundred dollar a day fine for staying open while following guidelines. While tattoo parlors, massage studios are open, this bullying has to stop. Several counties surrounding Humboldt are choosing not to find businesses that are following Newsom's tyrantic unconstitutional guidelines. Who do you think is holding this community together? What do you think small business owners are going to do if nobody lets them reopen? Get a job at Kentucky Fried Chicken? They're going to pack up and we're going to leave. We are fighters, the hustlers, and the problem solvers of this community. We're going to move to areas that support and appreciate the money and energy and contribution that we're making to this society. It's easy for all of you guys to sit there and tell everyone to stay home and stay safe while you sit behind a desk collecting a paycheck. Small business owners don't get a paycheck. We earn our money the hard and honest way and we voted you in here. We pay your salary. You work for us and we voted you in and we can and will vote you out. And shame on you, Public Health Department. What a sad excuse for health awareness. Where are the people advocating for preventative health right now? And why is nobody talking about building up our immune system, educating how viruses actually work? Instead, we're telling people to wear masks and hide in our house. Mental health is the real pandemic here. Three minutes is hardly enough time to go into the details of gross amount of information being force-fed to us through the media. But I'm here for anyone that wants to learn that living in fear is what breeds disease. You want to stop the spread of disease? Close the fast food restaurants. Ban sodas and alcohol. Sugar's the number one thing that lowers our immune system. Me speaking out is also a message to our community to come together as a collective to stop the destruction of the city, our cities, and the complete lack of leadership here. There are groups out there to help us. The California State Militia will absolutely back the tyranny that we're facing here in Humboldt. I cannot do alone. I need everybody's help. Our local government can only push us as far as we let them. Our constitution protects us from people like you. It's time to learn our rights and exercise them. I'm here asking you, our local leaders, to take a good look at what you've done to our community and tell us what your plan is besides planting trees to help keep our community going and prevent us from turning into oryx. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, next we will have a Lost Coast Camp Nou.
Uh, can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
Okay, uh, thanks uh, for allowing me to speak tonight. I happen to be the owner of Lost Coast Camp Nou Karate. I was born and raised in Humboldt County and I have been practicing, uh, teaching, and now uh, the head instructor for the last twenty-plus years. We uh, went above and beyond, um, hand sanitizing, social distancing, mask wearing, and ultimately tripling our cleaning efforts in our school, which has allowed us to have zero trace contacts to our school. Uh, we are, we asked our parents, even if they have hay fever or a sniffle, we please ask them to keep them at home until they don't show any signs. And things were going good. And then I received a citation Saturday morning for five hundred dollars from a director of Public Works, Brian Gerving. And um, I, I, I obviously didn't expect it. So when it came to me, was surprised. I was all about ready to pay it and just move on. But then on, um, I believe it was Monday morning, driving through town, I realized there was an open sign in a massage parlor. And I thought that would, by the minute, may have been a mistake. So I decided to call and I called another one and I called another one. Then I started calling tattoo parlors. And then all of a sudden, I realized like, we have zero trace contacts, but we're being punished because I'm social distancing, cleaning, wearing masks. And I got tattoo artists that are anywhere from a, a couple inches, depending on the detail of the art, to up to two or three feet away from them at an hour plus. And then same thing with a massage, hands on people. And then obviously, when you get your nails done, you're in close proximity as well with hand touching. So I just, I'm just expressing my frustration because I feel like I'm doing everything right, but yet I'm getting punished. And I'm not a fitness um, building. My business license is service. And all I'm trying to do is I'm trying to service the community, help our kids become stronger leaders and be compassionate people and keep our adults on the, on the straight and narrow path and not sway from it and get themselves in trouble. Everybody in my school is held accountable. I know this more than most as far as me and my age, because I'm forty-seven years old, a diabetic with high blood pressure. I understand how severe this disease is. I appreciate everybody taking the time to listen to me and thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Right, next um, I will ask Janelle Egger.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Great, thank you. For other members of the public, um, I wanted to let you know that the council members have been um, meeting in strategic planning sessions, very interesting. You could find out more about this there, let's see, Friday meeting and then next Friday also. So if you contact the city clerk, I'm sure she'll be happy to um, tell you how to attend those. Also via Zoom. Uh, council members, I sent you an email on Friday regarding an ongoing Brown Act issue. I stopped short of restating that I would act to set aside a decision based on an incorrectly noted agenda item. I had stated this in an earlier email. I need to clarify that that remains my intent. I will act to set aside a decision based on an incorrectly agendaized item. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I am just going through the list now and I am looking at Elaine Ziegler, or Ziegler. Would you like to speak?
Hi, that's me. Yes, I would. Thanks. Okay, here I go. Each day, we look to the numbers that dictate what set of rules are imposed on us. Carrie Mullis is the Nobel Prize-winning biochemist, excuse me, who invented the PCR test, which is how we get our numbers. Mullis said himself PCR tests should not be used to diagnose viruses. He always stood by that. Next, I will cite a study that, among others, shows evidence contradicting the idea of asymptomatic spread. It's published in Nature Communications, a peer-reviewed scientific journal. The study was conducted by a team of scientists from three countries. They tracked nearly ten million citizens in Wuhan, China, and they found no asymptomatic spread. Yet despite all of this information among hundreds of other experts coming forward, we are still continuing to lose our rights. We are in a huge mental health crisis. That is the real pandemic. And it's only getting worse. Children are affected the most by this. People are dying from suicide, turning to alcohol or drugs, and the list goes on. Far more lives are being ruined by these measures than by a virus with an over ninety-nine percent recovery rate. But what is happening? Schools are closed, no sports for youth, and small business owners are being bullied and shut down, such as Jason Mather's Camp Nou Karate Dojo in Eureka. Even though other corporate gyms are open and massage parlors, fast food restaurants and liquor stores, et cetera, it makes no sense. Business owners like Jason are being fined to the tune of five hundred dollars a day, even though it goes against constitutional rights. Shame on anyone who would do this or stand by and allow this to happen. Stay home, save lives. This is the type of thing causing suicides. I saw an article of a twelve-year-old boy recently who hung himself. And one about a business owner with a family who killed himself. This is just two of thousands. Is this what you want to happen? Here is a reminder that we live in the United States of America and we are entitled to our God-given rights. Who is profiting over relief funds and fines? Business owners being bullied have huge groups of people behind them and there will be resistance. This is the United States of America and we will demanding, be demanding our rights, all of them, including the right to breathe without a mask. What also stands behind us is the United States Constitution. We, the people, are on the right side of history and I suggest that everyone listening to me right now gets on board as Americans. We will have our rights and hundreds of patriots like me won't back down. Little side note, I'm actually disgusted at the fact that the mental health of children isn't being recognized except for to poison them with vaccines and fluoride. And people like Jason who work with children are no less than heroes. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather McCoy. Oh, I'm sorry, Tara, you didn't have a camera.
I'm using, I'm using another computer, so I'm showing up with a different name. Hello, folks, um, I'm just here to uh, echo some of the other thoughts earlier regarding improving our town, helping our small businesses, making our Main Street, which is one-on-one Broadway, more welcoming for visitors and people who live here alike so that we can have a much better happy economy here and a happier population. We do need to support small business and I'd love to see more along our main streets. And we all know, none of us really have a lot invested in fast food and big corporate businesses in our town. They don't give us that very much. So we all know that we benefit from the beauty and the health of our citizens, small business, and beautifying with landscaping and trees. I especially am concerned about Broadway, the south entrance to town. Thank you all.
Thank you. Um, Lynn Martinez.
Uh, good evening, Mayor. I'm not making comments today.
Thank you very much. Um, do we have anybody else who wants to make a comment? If you could raise your hand, that would be really helpful. And maybe between Pam and I, we can see you. It looks like maybe we are through our public comment section. So with that, we don't have anybody on the phone, right? Assistant City Manager Powell?
Yes. Uh, Nezzy Wade has her hand raised.
Oh, good catch. I didn't see her. Nezzy, go ahead.
And so does Tiffany Nacone too, I'm sorry.
It takes village. So we'll start with Nezzy.
You're muted, Nezzy. I don't know if you're speaking.
Nezzy, how about if we'll come back to you? Uh, we'll let Tiffany Nacone go first and then, oh, did you find it? Get it? All right, go ahead.
This is from farther outside to my city. I need water. I need light and air. I need space and a place to rest and restore. Pushed to the margins, I cannot get to the offerings my city claims to provide. Yet I wonder if the goal is to see, there will be no way for me to reside. Now moved out, must I move on from my home, the only place I know? Where, where now can I go? Push me, poke me, provoke me, and pigeonhole me? Make me go to where? To what? To whatever works for my city council, my staff, my leaders. My city has divorced me and disowned me, discarded my past as a home. My city has divorced me and disowned me, discarded my past as a home, my past as a homegrown Euricon, may be a transplant well rooted and naturalized. O my city leaders and law enforcers, how can I help open your eyes to my sensibilities that your ordinances are my demise? Without water, without light, without air, without space to restore and to grow and connect to the things I need, I die.
Is that it, Nezzy?
That's it.
Thank you very much. And now, thank you Tiffany Nacone, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a comment regarding this camping ordinance. Would the mayor like me to do that now or when you get to it on the agenda?
It would be appropriate to do it during the agenda item, if you'd like me to do that. Thank you very much. So do we have any others? All right, then we will move forward in our agenda. The next item is the consent calendar. Does anybody have anything they would like to pull from the consent calendar? See, none can I get a motion to approve it.
So moved.
And Councilmember Castellano seconded. So can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Castellano?
Aye.
Councilmember Moulton? Councilmember Arroyo?
Aye.
Councilmember Bauer?
Aye.
Councilmember Bregel?
Yes.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
All right, so now we will move on to item C1, which is the city camping ordinance. And I would like to then open the floor to City Attorney Robert Buck.
Yes, so this item has been on your agenda multiple times and you have heard a great deal of public comment. At one point, prior to the introduction, two weeks ago, the agenda, the ordinance was significantly redrafted, then presented to you for introduction. During the discussion of the ordinance, I did present a couple of very minor wording changes to the ordinance. And you introduced it with those changes in mind. What you now have before you is the ordinance re-presented for adoption with those changes included. So that's, that's why we're here. I'm available to answer any questions, but the recommendation is to, to adopt this ordinance.
City Attorney Black, would you mind, there was a reference to a Brown Act issue that you could address so that people could more easily understand what is of concern?
Sure. So the, I'm not sure, I'm not totally sure where the Brown Act comes into it. The Brown Act requires that we put on the agenda a statement in abbreviated or short form as to what the intended or proposed action is. That has been the case both two weeks ago and tonight. I think the contention is that the changes that were made are not clerical or insignificant, but they're substantive. I disagree with that. In one section, we added three words to the definition of, see if I can find it here, involuntary camping. So we added the words "by a person." I believe that the definition before we added those words made clear that involuntary camping would be by a person. I recommended adding those three words because grammatically, I just think it reads a lot clearer when at the very end of that sentence, it says "to that same person." So the reference from "to that same person" back to "by a person who is undertaking an action," I think is purely clarifying, doesn't change the substance at all. Another, the other change that was made was the word measurably was added to the exemption from having to break camp thirty minutes after dawn if it is actively raining or snowing. The other, that was a clarifying word. The other option is to, I think, I think it's binary. The other option is that you have immeasurable rain or snow. That leads to an absurd ordinance, an absurd interpretation of what is intended to be a humane condition added to this ordinance. And so we add the word measurably to make clear which of the binary choices it is, leaving nothing there is simply confusing and establishes ground for conflict. The, the second point being that the changes were announced prior to the motion, prior to the second and prior to the adoption, or excuse me, the introduction of the ordinance. I think that's what a meeting and a hearing on the introduction of an ordinance is intended to do. And so I understand that the Ms. Egger feels extremely strongly about this, I just disagree.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions on this item? From council? Councilmember Arroyo and then Councilmember Castellano.
Thank you. I, I, Attorney Black, I do know the answer to this question, but it came up a few times from members of the public. After there was news coverage of the ordinance and then people thought it was, like, that the city was going to be allowing camping more broadly and under more circumstances, and didn't really understand that we came to this place because our prior ordinances didn't jive with the Boise decision. So I was wondering if you could just briefly summarize why we're talking about this? If anyone has joined this meeting and did not hear that, just a short synopsis, if you would.
Sure. So the Boise, the term involuntary camping comes from the Boise decision. And it's important to recognize that the city of Eureka, the camping ordinance that we have as it exists today, as we are talking, prohibits camping anywhere in the city, basically at any time, on both public and private property. What we're doing now is attempting to establish a regulation of camping that allows for involuntary camping pursuant to the guidelines suggested. And, you know, the, the case was, didn't go into a great deal of detail, but the guidelines that were suggested by the Boise case, that you are an involuntary camper if there is no shelter space available to you as a particular individual with your particular characteristics and needs. If there is a shelter space available and you choose not to avail yourself of it, then that is, that is a violation. There are also violations based on location. Just to recite the statistics that have been provided by our planning staff, we are, we are regulating or prohibiting camping in about a thousand, on about a thousand acres of publicly owned property. And those, and those are our parks, our recreational and multi-use trails, obviously the zoo, the golf course, and three different commercial zones in the city that take up a very small geographic segment of the city. Nine hundred acres are left where we are not prohibiting camping to involuntary campers. In other words, people for whom there is no shelter. And, you know, that's the, the, the nature of this ordinance, that's what it does. There's nothing that says you have to adopt this. I would advocate that it's reasonable to provide certain tools for law enforcement to try to keep public order and to organize camping in a way that it doesn't adversely affect the entire city population and possibly even including some other campers or other homeless people. But what is imperative is to release the existing ordinance, which unlawfully makes camping unlawful everywhere. So I don't know if that answers your question. There is, okay, good, thanks.
I think folks thought, folks reached out to me thinking we were like falsely, incorrectly, I should say, assuming that we were trying to just like throw open the doors wide to camping all over the city. I don't think that was what we've expressed at any point in this process, but it was, I think, a misunderstanding. So it's helpful for you to give that context. Thank you very much.
Let me say one thing, the, people are questioning where camping is a possibility under the right circumstances. There are, there are nine hundred acres in that category. Much of that is not necessarily city property. I think there's a lot of Caltrans property included in that nine hundred acres and Caltrans, at least the current philosophy of Caltrans under the governor's direction, there's, you know, very little enforcement, very little enforcement. But there's other, there's federal property and city and county property. So this is not, this is not a dire constriction of any existing rights, in my opinion. Other lawyers and other citizens may not share that, but that's how, that's how it looks to me.
Thank you. Councilmember Castellano?
I just had a quick process question, and that is, in the, during the December meeting, I brought up, and it was agreed upon by consensus, a review of the effects of the ordinance after six to eight months. And I'm assuming that wouldn't carry over and I need, I would need to bring that up again. But I just want to be clear about that, or, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's, I think consistent with the stated agenda item that's present on the agenda tonight, you could, you can request that. That's a, that's a matter of, you're basically asking for something to come back on a future agenda after some staff work. And I think you're entitled to do that by consensus at any time, so.
Great. And I'll, I'll bring more of that during the comments period.
All right. Do we have any other questions? Are we ready to move on to public comment on this item? It looks like we are, and I see Tiffany Nocan, she is ready. She only had to wait a little bit this time. Feel free.
Thank you. This is Tiffany Nocan, I work at Disability Rights California. This is the federally designated protection and advocacy agency. That means my office is charged with advocating for the rights of people with disabilities. I'm here again to say the proposed ordinance violates the constitution. First, the city has not addressed the homeless services that are in restricted zones. Expecting unsheltered persons to leave the restricted zone unduly burdens them. It denies them access to services and programs they need to survive. This is especially true for people with disabilities. Second, unhoused people cannot pay fines from citations and infractions. They are poor, they can't pay fines, and that could result in jail time. The city attorney said that these negative impacts will be unlikely, but the ordinance still codifies these monetary punishments. The reason to pass laws is to enforce them, and to enforce this ordinance is to criminalize homelessness. Third, at the last council meeting, public comments criticized the ordinance, yet council members were more concerned with the interest of business owners who offered zero public comments on the ordinance themselves. Finally, the ordinance fails to address the systemic causes of homelessness. The ordinance is both discriminatory and unconstitutional. Do not pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Assistant Ms. Mandropal, do we have any others?
Sandra Warshaw would like to speak.
All right, Ms. Warshaw.
Can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
Hello. Oh, great. Okay, I want to say that I, I am, like I said, I'm really impressed by the programs that you've developed. And I think, you know, they're based on a heartfelt desire to help people get off the streets. But I think the ongoing issue has been and continues to be that then what happens to the people who are still on the streets and who may still get to be in those programs and for the people that those programs just don't really apply because they're just not going to be able to use them. And I think what's hard is, and I know that we as advocates are not terribly popular and I get that, but what I've always sought to believe in and I trust and I never have lost faith, that actually, it is actually our destiny to be, to claim the same kind of solutions that we do, you know, in terms of the, of Delarte or the kinetic sculpture race, or, you know, any one of the things that we, we reach beyond ourselves, beyond our belief and our capacity. And I think the presentation today proves that's exactly what we're capable of. But what gets us here is, for example, why do we have fecal matter? Well, we don't have a twenty-four seven bathroom. And I know that I've heard, and Kim is often on the front lines of the hard work, it's been attempted and it just didn't succeed. And the thing that I want to bring up is, and there are other things like that, whether it's, you know, trying a camp and then saying, well, we can't do that anymore because it didn't work. I'm going to say this, why do we have to look to other regions? We have the creativity, the innovation to say, if we want to get to the finish line, like with the kinetic sculpture race, we set our heart and our mind and our soul on that finish line and we don't stop. And the wonderful example in the book, and I hope I don't get more time to say, that Dawn Thomas talked about her first race, the wheels came off her vehicle and they just put some float, I don't know exactly what they were, but they put some things on the back and, and just kept moving and they ended up at the end of the race on their own speed. Another thing she talks about is Colbert Brown, working with drug users, and they began to become racers. And it gave them a sense of their own worth and their own vitality and their own spark. And so I'm saying that I think we should start to say that claim our moral vision, claim our heart, that I see in all the council members when they're so proud of what they've done and have every reason to be. But to leave the people out there, it is cruel and unusual punishment, there's just no way around it. And we can keep saying, you know, I understand wanting to show the great successes we've had, but even for one person to be subjected to some of the conditions that I've seen when I take a walk around is just not who we are. But somehow we've lost confidence in our ability to be the nation that we believe us to be, founded on the principles of equality and dignity. And the way that the unsheltered are often treated is not with dignity. And I would also ask the city council, I know it's not in your hearts because I know how much you care about the people, but every time we talk about homeless, unsheltered, we put the word drug addiction, we talk about fecal matter. And I think it's time that we claim.
Sorry, Sandra, that's your time.
Ever since I went over, I stopped now.
Thank you so much, it's nice hearing from you. And, and who is next on our list?
Mayor, Nezzy Wade was not sure if she was going to comment, but we can ask her.
If you would like to comment, Nezzy, you could unmute and we'll give you a few seconds to do that.
Hey.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you very much. I've, I've made lots of comments historically about all of, all of this. I've, I've made lots of comments historically about all of, all of this, but I, when I keep hearing that, you know, there's nine hundred acres, they're not prohibited, where are those nine hundred acres? What zones are they in? What are the conditions or the criteria that have to apply in order for them to be able to be used as camping areas? Everything seems to be so circuitous, and the language seems to be so vague, it's still so hazy and unclear. Where? Where? What is the criteria of the category that would allow these kinds of things to happen? And so I know, I heard you state property, I understand that the state has said, yes, we need, we have property available, it's possible to use state property. But is the city willing to help identify areas within the city that are state properties? I know we have identified some of them, but is the city willing to work with nonprofits, entities like Affordable Home, Affordable Homeless Housing Alternatives, to basically come up with some basic options or alternatives that would provide some alternative spaces for folks? Because right now, there just doesn't seem to be any answers to that really nebulous thing about space. And space is vital. We have to have it in order to do anything. You have to have designated sites in order to get funding, in order to do anything. And so leaving it very vague and saying, it's going to give us an opportunity to tell people where they can go, where, where they can go and what are they going to go to? I mean, it seems that we could do much better with trying to create opportunities, and I'd like to see much more of the time spent focused on creating those alternatives rather than talking about how we restrict people from being in areas where they can get really fundamentally what they need. And I'm very concerned about people not being able to get fundamentally what they need or being able to get to where they need to be in order to get services. And I hear this from people all the time, so I'm speaking on their behalf as well as my own. So that's really basically all I have to say. I would really hope that you wouldn't pass this ordinance, but it seems that we're pretty far down this rabbit hole. I just really want to help people be aware that it is something that may have ramifications for the city and for the folks out there beyond what you can imagine at this time. So please be really careful and have heart. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any others?
Mayor, I did not have any other requests, and I don't see any hands raised at this time.
Okay.
Hello. Sorry, this is Janelle. I don't know how to raise my hand.
Oh, okay.
All right, well, we hear you.
Okay. Um, so last Friday, Miles was on Headline Humble. He did a great job talking about the city. This ordinance came up, and he stated that parks were restricted areas. And I think that is old, that that was in a previous version, but those have been taken out. I would like to have that clarified. But I think it reflects the, that this is now a very long, complicated ordinance, and it's hard to understand what it says. Anyway, as for designated sites, this is changing the camping permitted only in specifically designated areas to a no camping in some designated areas.
Yeah, exactly.
The problem? Staff claims there's lots of acres of land, but as has been said, we don't know where they are. And this is, is limited to sleeping, not a place to live. Verbally stated purpose is to divert people into the city programs and services. How about instead of a citation, use a referral? The statement of purpose says camping activities may constitute a public health and safety hazard when conducted without the proper security and sanitary facilities and precautions? But you've been told you can't provide these. These will not be available to the people that are out there trying to sleep. So the real problems are going to continue. Why can't you provide them? It was for liability issues. But that's ignoring that you have a shelter crisis declaration. Again, under your current law, you can designate areas, you have limited your liabilities, and people could live there, not just sleep. The ordinance definition of availability of shelter is not in line with the Martin v. Wozniak decision. That is key. I understand this is a difficult and complex issue. However, I ask you not to take any action, or if you do, vote to reject it. And then, you know, we could really sit down and talk about it and come up with something that works. Do you have any more time?
You are, we had, you had thirty seconds, you have two seconds, one second, and now you're out.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Oh, I muted myself, that was weird. So it is about eight o'clock. We have, we've been in a meeting since five o'clock, because we didn't really get much of a break between closed session and this. So I'm going to allow everybody a chance to take a short break, and when we come back, we will get into the comment section of this. And we still do have the important report. It's the, from Brian Gerbing, about the capital improvement program. I knew it was SIP, and I was just trying to remember what it was called. It's a big one. So come back and hopefully we can have a good and expedient conversation about this and get into the other things as well. I'll talk to you guys in ten minutes. Eight, ten. Everybody, before we go into comments, I understand that maybe City Attorney Black has a few words to kick us off. Hope he looks like he's getting already.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Are we back in session?
We are back in session.
I, I didn't have my earbuds in, so I wasn't getting the audio.
I understand that we are just going to, you may have something you want to say before we get into the discussion.
Yes, so Ms. Egger said something that caused me to take a look at the, the ordinance description of prohibited place, and in fact, this version of the ordinance does not prohibit camping in parks. The park, the rules of our city parks prohibit nighttime use, and I believe that's a universal rule in the city parks, which nighttime use of all sorts, everything from soccer games to camping. But the introduction version of this ordinance also did not have that provision, which frankly was a mistake. And, but this is, I, I understand it, the adoption version and the introduction version, I didn't look at it, but Assistant City Manager Powell took a look at it. And so I think we're in a position to go forward and adopt this ordinance and come back with a cleanup that adds city parks to the definition of prohibited places, which we'll just do at a, I recommend we'll do at a future process for introduction and adoption.
All right. So with that, I will open the floor to comments from council. Councilmember Castellano.
I mean, I, I think I've been fairly consistent with my, you know, thoughts on this matter, so I won't go into great depths again, but I just want to reiterate that though I appreciate City Attorney Black's work on this ordinance and, you know, the process, and I do know that, you know, staff are trying to kind of find these balancing places, you know, in our society. I, I still, from my vantage point, think this is not the best approach, and that we would be, you know, doing better to work towards a planning around homelessness and how to address that. And I am encouraged that city council seems on board with, with that in a future session. You know, and I think that Tiffany Nokon spoke to many of my concerns. You know, I'm, I'm still somewhat concerned, not through disrespect of our police and CSET, but that this ordinance kind of centralizes policing in relationship to people who are unhoused and camping, whereas I think that there are better strategies, you know, that other communities are doing and that we've talked about, and I think it would be wiser to advocate for those better strategies, even, you know, as we move forward now. I would like to, you know, so since we have Councilmember Molton and Councilmember Bauer here, I'm, I'm not sure if you, you know, watched, watched all of the meetings in December, but I did advocate at that time for a six to eight month review of this ordinance in order to assess how, what its effect has been in the community in terms of citations, people having access to shelter, housing, things like that. So I would like to, again, advocate for that and, and some sort of review of this item in six to eight months, maybe, you know, prior to winter, you know, the onset of winter, I think would be really important because, you know, obviously, if this is creating a more tenuous situation for people who are unhoused, we would want it, want to address that, again, before the weather becomes more inclement.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments or a motion? Councilmember Molton?
I'd just say that I would absolutely support a review in a certain amount of time. One of the things that allows me to support this ordinance or to feel good supporting this ordinance is the reassurance from the staff and from the police department that this is like one tool in the box, and that nobody's going to go out and start stuffing and cuffing, as Miles keeps saying. This is not, that's not what's going to happen. So I like, I am trusting in that, and that I believe that law enforcement needs this tool to address some of the more outlying and more difficult situations. And we have all of these other great tools that we are bringing to bear, but a review after a certain amount of time would allow us to assess whether or not this is in fact a rarely used tool, whether it is in fact an edge case kind of thing, or if it is being used to make people suffer more. So I would definitely support a review. Does that need, would need, we need to make a motion for that, or is that just like City Attorney Black was saying, just direction to staff that we could give now and take on later?
It's, it sounded like it was something that we could direct staff to like check in, and then we could put it on the agenda in six to eight months so that we don't forget about it.
Just wanted to make sure that if what we're asking for is a certain kind of statistic that we're putting that out there ahead of time so that can actually be collected.
City Manager Slattery, I'll let you.
I would see this as another uplifts CSET report that includes some of the similar things that Councilmember Castellano was doing, but adding the frequency at which the ordinance has been used. I'd also say that, you know, six months is a pretty short timeframe. I don't know how much it's going to be used. I think it's thirty days before we can even start using this. But that's definitely something we could do as part of a report with CSET to, to bring it back, and that inference as to how the ordinance can, is working can come from that report from CSET.
Councilmember Mol.
I guess it's still my floor. I guess my question is for Councilmember Castellano, is the idea of doing a review before winter sets in, if, if we as a group agree that it's not working out, we could do something about it at that point?
That's the idea.
Thank you, that's on my question.
And Councilmember Burgel.
Well, I too am a fan of a review. I think that October sounds like, you know, that's about eight months, seven months, really, if you consider the adoption, and that gives us, you know, a brief amount of time before winter, but it does give us some time. And I would like, I would like to know, too, with this kind of assessment, if in fact we could get some input from the business owners at that point as well. I mean, certainly, we want to see how it's impacting people experiencing homelessness, but I'm, I would like to see if there's been any changes in Old Town or these areas that we're discussing. Is, is the same business still happening? Are they still having these similar, similar issues? Because I think that that's important as well, to look at both sides. And with that, I see someone else's hand is up, but I'll get a motion out there, and then we can discuss further, if that's okay. So I move that we waive full reading, read by title only, and adopt bill number 993-CS, an ordinance of the city of Eureka repealing and replacing section 93.02 of Title IX, Chapter 93, Parks and Recreation.
Thank you. Do I have a second on that? And we'll have discussion afterwards, so if you have something to say, you haven't lost your chance.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? No discussion? All right, it looks like maybe we're ready for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Castellano.
No.
Councilmember Molton.
Aye.
Councilmember Arroyo.
Aye.
Councilmember Bauer.
Aye.
Councilmember Burgel.
Yes.
Four yes votes. Councilmember Castellano dissenting, motion carries.
Mayor. I was just, can, can you please disable chat?
Yes, it's happening.
Thank you.
Thank you. I did one more comment, if that's okay.
Sure. The vote's happened. Go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to support the idea of the review within six to eight months, and, and I wanted to see if, you know, based on Councilmember Molton's question and the original, you know, proposal by Councilmember Castellano, is there any additional information staff need about what we would like to have brought back as part of that?
I, I think it's pretty clear. It seemed that most of the stuff that, most of the topics that Councilmember Castellano brought up were covered in CSET's reports that they provide, and we could look at the variance between now, this report, and when we give a report in October and provide another statistic as to how many people have gotten an infraction, and how many of those people that were going to get an infraction actually benefited them. I, I would hope that we come back and we see that this gives the opportunity for more people to enter into our restorative justice programs, and we'll provide more stats on that as that's further, further developed.
So before we get too far down the road, we've already had a vote, and so I think now if we're discussing something, it's no longer part of our agenda. So I am going to ask you to hold that thought, maybe have that conversation with Miles on your own, because we, I just don't think we should, because we're done, right? I just want to keep us to the agenda.
So i- is it okay if I give Miles, City Manager Slattery, some feedback on what I think is important without, I mean, there's just something that hasn't been brought up that I think would be important, but I don't know if council doesn't consent on it, if it would be included or not.
So I'm thinking that we will have a check-in before we ask for the report, and I think that at any time you can ask City- And I think that at any time you can ask city manager Slattery what it is that you want, and then before we'll check in and make sure it's all included. Does that sound fair? I want to make sure everything gets included, but I want to try to be mindful as staying to my agenda because I'm not good about. Making sure that happens. And and I do definitely want to get to the next item, which is the salary schedule. So I will invite Will Folger to come up and give us a presentation. I see your mute is off. Are you trying to talk, Will?
Can you hear me?
Now we can.
You can. Okay. All right, this item is coming before you today because as required by law, where we need to report out changes in executive salaries. When we adopt a new salary schedule, there's been plenty of. Changes over the last year that have been pre-approved, they've been amended in the salary schedule, but it hasn't required us to report it out. And so. Today, just very briefly. We're reporting that the two salaries that have changed today are for the new position of the assistant city manager. And then the position of city manager, which. Has realigned to a different. Slot on the salary schedule. And again, I'm finding myself facing technical difficulties. And I can't pull up the exact. Salary range number right now. But I can, but I've satisfied the legal requirement to say that those. That those ranges have changed for those specific positions and they are reflected in the salary schedule that's before you right now. I'll. Open this up for questions if there are any, and I will be pulling up as much information as I possibly can with my limited internet access right now. I apologize.
Thank you. It looks like councilmember Castellano and then councilmember Arroyo. Did I see your hand up as well? Okay, just Castellano and then Bauer.
And just a quick question, because you did bring up the city manager position. I noticed with that one that there actually is no range. And so is that the change you're speaking to or? Is a range that we.
Yeah, thanks. I actually do know that one off the top of my head. That has changed to range. A zero six, which is at one hundred and sixty two. Thousand dollars a year as opposed to one hundred and fifty eight and some odd, which was on the previous schedule. That was back from when Greg Sparks. Was still in the in the seat. As you know, this changed previously with the others with Dean Lauder for a period of time. Where that was at one seventy, it is now gone to one sixty two, which is reflected in our salary schedule is at A zero six.
To get that, is that your question, Nazee Alden? All right, councilmember Bauer.
See if I can do this with videos. Working okay?
Yep, you're looking good and you're sounding good.
Right. I just want to say thank you for putting the classification with the salary schedules and it's just so much more readable and. Easier for the public to to look at. So thanks for that, Will.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, we've been hoping to do that for a while, but there's been so many changes to our whole classification system over the last couple of years that it. It didn't make sense to until somewhat recently. And this is our first opportunity to really roll it out, kind of in in the way that we usually had it several years ago. So I'm glad that we're finally getting back to this format. And I know it's much easier to read.
Any other questions? If not, do we have any comments from the audience on this item?
No one has respect or requested to speak, but.
If anybody wants to speak on this item specifically, raise your hand or. Mute, I think, I mean, I'm not anticipating a lot. All right, it looks like we're good. And I will bring it back then to council for comments and a motion. Councilmember Castellano.
I'm happy to make the motion, but I'm just wondering if we need to make an amendment to the motion reflecting the city manager position, since that was not what was included in the. Or does it matter?
If that's actually an error in the document, then yes, we would need to, is it still, I again have to apologize if it's reflecting. The one hundred and fifty eight at A O three in the salary ring, as I recall from memory. Then that would be incorrect and we would need to amend that to the the salary schedule that we post on our website. So if that's what it's reflecting, then we would definitely need to amend it to A O six. At one hundred and sixty two thousand a year.
Okay, then we'll we'll amend it. I will make a motion to. Adopt a resolution of the city council approving city salary pay rate schedule for all regular, full-time and regular part-time position titles and classifications reflecting salary adjustments. For various positions and establishing pay rates for new classifications with the amendment. To the city manager position, changing it from AC zero zero three to AC zero zero six.
Correct.
A second.
All right, nice catch. Now, councilmember Arroyo seconded. Do we have any further discussion on this item? All right, seeing then we'll ask for roll call vote.
Councilmember Castellano?
Hi.
Councilmember Molten?
Hi.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Hi.
Councilmember Bauer?
Aye.
Councilmember Burgel?
Yes.
Unanimous yes vote. Motion carries.
All right. And now we are going to move on to the capital improvement program under reports and action items. And I would like to welcome Director Garin to make this presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, members of the council. I'll just be doing a very brief introduction this evening and handing it off to your city engineer, Jesse Willer. He has led his staff through compiling the capital improvement program again this year. The lion's share of the work was done by deputy city engineer David Case and engineering technician Aaron McDaniel. Both put in a lot of hours putting this document together. And please accept our apologies for getting it to you today. I understand it's a big document. And not a lot of time to review it, but Jesse will do a good job of presenting the CIP. Especially highlighting some of the new projects that haven't come before council before. So I just want to thank everyone that's been involved in the effort. It's a really important planning tool. And thank you also to staff from the other departments that have worked with public work staff in putting this together, including. IT and facilities and community services. Really appreciate all of the work that they've done to help develop the projects and the budgets for them. With that, I will hand it off to Jesse and I'll be available to chime in for any questions that that he needs help with.
Great, thank you, Brian. Well, good evening, everyone. It's a very early evening and hopefully it doesn't go too late here. I will be looking to share my screen here, so I'm going to transition over and see if we can get this presentation. All right, does everybody? See the presentation and not the presentation view on their screen? Looks like it. Okay, great. Thank you. All right. So we'll get started here and wanted to first just echo Brian's appreciation for every everybody's put effort into this. It takes a lot of effort to put a document together like this because you're you're basically planning a year's worth of. Projects and then also looking back at the years projects. And projecting out five years ahead and and working with new budgets and it takes a lot of effort, whether it's. Public works, engineering staff, or the other departments, community services, IT, all those ones Brian mentioned, just it's a very important to to for that appreciation is very genuine. So thank you to them. So getting started or before we jump right in, I really wanted to kind of take a moment to step back and look at what our past year from the standpoint of capital. Project planning look like, because about this time last year, we were doing this very same thing. We were going through a presentation. We had put together a full year's worth of projects. We presented to council, council accepted that or, you know, you know, brought brought these projects forward. And then about a month later, the country kind of shut down with the pandemic. From a project standpoint, that that kind of tweaked all the budgets at the city, everything kind of, everybody was, you know, we didn't want to, you know, everything's conservative, not knowing what was going to happen, which makes a lot of sense. So that meant budgeting into the next fiscal year that a lot of the projects that were listed out in that capital program were were kind of pulled out of the program. Not knowing what kind of, you know, financial feature we were looking at. So we're in a very different place now. We spent the year kind of, while we had some projects going, we continued planning our planning efforts and extended some of those planning efforts to try to get ahead. On things that we typically would would try to get to, but we're so focused on, you know, delivering projects that are in front of us that, you know, they're just harder to get to. So advancing some of those plannings, whether it's non-motorized transportation and and other things along those lines, getting some project shovel ready if funds come down. From the federal government or other state governments that we'd be ready and prepared to take advantage of those opportunities and really be able to put some. Some work on the ground here in Eureka. So just a little bit of a kind of a perspective there from last year to this year with with the capital program. So let's get started. Overview, we're going to talk a little bit about what a capital improvement program is. We'll talk about what our completed and in progress projects are. And then we'll move into what is actually represented for this coming fiscal year and the next, the next five, the five years of our capital improvement program. We're going to talk a little bit about what's the status of our city's infrastructure through projects. Really, you get a good feel for the different categories of the CIP and what the different levels of need are given by the projects that are represented there, the prioritized projects. We have a lot of infrastructure, whether it's in our street with utilities, streets, as well as facilities. We have harbor waterfront. All those things take a lot of, they all have infrastructure components and they all need to be, they're all assets that need to be tracked and maintained and kept in good standing. A CIP is a short term plan which identifies capital projects and provides a planning schedule and options to finance the plan. Is a very simplistic definition, for the most part. Very simple projects are like this and often times other projects are very. Complex in the planning and the different funding sources and the years of development and how they interact within the budgeting and scheduling for project to make a project happen. The purpose of the CIP really is to get at an orderly implementation of the goals of the general plan and the strategic vision documents. Orderly and timely basis for sound budget decisions, the plan and finance future needs. And and maintenance or replacement of the city's infrastructure. So it's it's kind of this this way to structure and order and and really. Manage how we take care of our infrastructure and we have a lot of infrastructure. The document also acts as a financial document from the standpoint of identifying the costs that are associated with projects. Going, you know, from now into the future. It prioritizes those projects. Typically, projects that are in the next couple of years have have funds that are earmarked and we were planning for those project costs to come. And then project schedules are developed based on project phasing and funding availability. Sometimes a project will have a phase that happens and then other phases take longer time because you're either going after grant funds or you need time to accumulate enough money to do the project. These are all things that are get captured in the the five year CIP. An important aspect of the city Eureka is that we're a historic city. We're a beautiful Victorian seaport, right? And. What that also means, though, is it comes with having historic infrastructure in some cases, and that historic infrastructure needs maintenance and in causes as we get further and further into the future, there's regulatory requirements that are increased and. A lot of things that kind of influence the needs of the infrastructure and of the city in order to maintain water and sewer in our streets. Deferred maintenance, this comes up quite often in the CIP. It's it is really, you know, the city's infrastructure buildings, street sewer, water storm drains are constantly in need of maintenance. If there aren't funds available to maintain those and that that maintenance gets pushed off, that's what deferred maintenance is. So that's something that's important because as infrastructure gets older, it often degrades at a faster rate than if you were to maintain it more regularly, just like when you maintain your your car or your bike or. You know, whatever piece of equipment you have, the more often you maintain it, the more the longer it lasts and the more use you'll be able to get out of it. So now we start talking about projects themselves. This is a wonderful photo, just has great color and context to it, but this is the groundbreaking for the. For the waterfront drive G to J project, the connection there from G to J. And we'll be jumping into some of the projects that we have that have been completed in the last year, starting with. Our reservoir roof coating where we went in and we had a contractor come in and coat sandblasting coat all the beams that support the roof over the water reservoir. And that was really important to, of course, maintain a healthy drinking water source. There's another photo from from there where we have the scaffolding and one of our project managers, Kelly Allen, there who managed the project, standing on top of the scaffolding that the crews work from. You can see there, there's Kelly down there at the bottom of the the reservoir, way down there. So it's a very, very large reservoir, twenty million gallons. This is one side, ten million gallons, and it was great projects and successfully completed. This is our secondary clarifier. This is one of the secondary clarifiers that we have down the treatment plant. We work to replace the bridges and the drive that spins the secondary clarifier to do its job down there. So this project was completed in this last year. Here's a few photos showing. Existing bridge removal. Here's the new aluminum bridge that's that's there now. So definitely an upgrade and something that was, you know, as these things decay and begin to break down over time in a very caustic environment like the wastewater treatment plant, we need to stay on top of them. Next, we move over to, this is at Del Norte and Broadway. This is the Broadway lift station where we replaced a aging. Air pot, which is a technology you just don't see around anymore. Our crews had worked. For decades maintaining this thing and keeping it in working order is amazing that the thing was able to function as long as it did. But now we have a new, a new pump station, new package pump station was installed there. This is the control box there for it. So that's a, that's a new piece of the sewer system there. Or a replaced piece of the sewer system. We also did a project to help maintain our cross town interceptor, which is our large pressure sewer main that connects. All of the collection system along the waterfront of the town, all the way from over by Tid Street to the wastewater treatment plant over by Hill Ficker. So this project installed cathodic protection and other annod beds and things along those lines that would help protect that pipe in the environment that it exists down there on the waterfront. Here's a panel that is associated with the the anode bed and the cathodic protection system. Back behind the Bay Shore Mall. We also upgraded our motor control centers in the pump station. And again, this is a completed projects. This one, I think, has been in the CIP ever since I've been here. So this is a very big success as far as getting a complex project, very complex, a lot of different. Teams, whether it's a SCADA communications side of things to the electrical, to the mechanical and getting all those things to come together and and it's been a long time coming. So this one was. Completed in the last, in this last year and very recently, actually. This project is the Broadway multimodal corridor plan. We talked a little bit about it. Well, we didn't, it was talked a little bit about earlier in the meeting. This plan is a joint effort with city of Eureka, HCOG and Caltrans. It was funded by a strategic partnership grant and it was to do some planning for the Broadway corridor between Fourth Street and Herrick Avenue. This project will also come back up a little bit further because there's still other. The, there's still other. The, there's still other parts of it included in the CIP later, so we'll get to that. I'm not going to go into great detail now, but this plan is coming back to H cog this week on Thursday. I think that was mentioned earlier. It's been to H cog in draft form and now it's coming back in its final form to be accepted by H cog. And this is a snippet from one of the slides from presentation publicly. And then this was a great earlier, Michelle had teed this up perfectly for us because she was mentioning that the lack of landscaping in the plan and. I think that is something in a transportation plan, oftentimes it's hard to get back to those things that aren't transportation related when you're dealing with Caltrans like Michelle mentioned. And then also with, you know, funding sources that are directly related to transportation projects. So. Here we have a rendering that was done that is now going to be included in the final report that's coming back to H cog. This tried to get at showing what the coster couplet would look like at the Wabash and Del Norte. Where it would kind of split at Wabash and Del Norte. And if we go back one slide here, you can see on the left here. In plan view, that's what it kind of looks like in the the concept, concepty type of figure that that is. But here you see it more of like a rendering with. Plantings and landscaping and street trees and sidewalk and people actually out there, you know, on the the edge of the roadway, using the roadway more so. And you also notice that the coster couplet expands the right away opportunities in the area very, in a lot of ways. Giving more opportunities for people and landscaping to both be in the corridor along the roadway. So. This project, again, is it's kind of wrapping up, but we put it here because as far as the plan's concerned, but we kept it in the CIP for kind of future potential phases. So we'll get to that a little bit later or touch on it a little bit later. So again, this is another in progress project, not quite completed yet, but this is a project that's coming up this summer. This is a street maintenance project. It's approximately a $2 million project with a combination of funding sources, primarily funded by the state transportation improvement program. Where the city was able to bring those state dollars in for a number of streets and this has kind of been in the works for a number of years. There was also some RMRA and gas tax and some PG and E dollars from one of the projects they're doing, we're able to incorporate that into some of the work to make larger repairs. And so we tried to wrap together, get a nice big project. This one is not measured H funded. This is all based on other funding sources. So this one will hit Highland, West Hawthorne, Felt, 14th, Caster and Clark. So look for that this summer. We also have this, this project is pedestrian crossing improvement project. This is a H ship grant funded project. It's a $1.2 million project. It's at 35 locations citywide. The intent is to. Construct bulb outs, curb ramps, sidewalk, high visibility crosswalks, pit, pedestrian activated rapid flashing beacons, audible pedestrian signals, radar feedback signs. It's currently, it was out to bid. It sounds like we got some good bids on the project, so that's exciting. And so look for this one to be starting this late spring. And there's going to be some of that, some of this, these improvements will be down in Henderson Center as well. This one is in progress from a couple of small points. This is the waterfront drive G to J and this one seems like it's been, I've talked about it many, many times, but nonetheless, we'll, we'll touch on it again. There's a few things to wrap up on the project too mainly. One is a connection from the the new sidewalk to the boardwalk. That goes behind the the bisque and that is planned to happen in the in the spring. And then there's also the overground or the under grounding. Of the overhead wires, which I think the wires are now down. We have to get the poles down and kind of finish, finish that out with the coordinating with utilities. So this one's very close to being all the way wrapped up. This is, here's the before and then here's the after. You can see before there was a gravel trail. Now we have the roadway as you've probably seen out there connecting all the way through. So our next project is also kind of a long winded project. It's it's a, it's a four street underground project and this is undergrounding overhead utilities along Fourth Street. This is a PG and E rule 20A funded project. So city gets rule 20A funds that they can use to do projects like this, we can do undergrounding. So. This project is almost all the underground trenching and conduits have been, have been installed. Here's a couple of photos from construction this last year. There's going to be that that big part of it is a big one that'll get kind of the construction crews off of Fourth Street, which you're probably seeing out there right now, where they had to trench and do a lot of. Cabinets and everything to get those overhead wires down into the ground. So there wouldn't be such a visual and and maintenance issue. There'll be a period of time though, for the next year or so where other utilities are trying to get, whether it's PG and E, AT&amp;T, suddenly they're getting their, their lines down off the poles. And down into the facilities that have been put underground. So. There'll be more out there happening with that. So that one's still in progress. Hopefully next year we can call this a completed project and we won't have any more of those poles. Outside light poles, we'll have the wires, all the overhead wires along Fourth Street there when you enter into Eureka from the north. Another project that we have going this summer is the Henderson Maintenance Improvement Project. So this is a. Maintenance project that's going to, as you can kind of see in the foreground of the photo here, there's a lot of cracking that's associated with the the concrete that's underneath the paved. Roadway there. We have concrete paving, almost the length of where we're doing the project from Fairfield to about F, I think, or D. I think it's D, excuse me. So we're not only fixing the, we're going to pave it, we're going to pave the road, but first we're going to get in and fix the utilities that are underlying it. We have. Both the water and sewer in Henderson are in poor condition. We had multiple breaks on Henderson this last year. So we'll be able to get in there and I say breaks, water line, water main breaks in this case where we had water, you know, shooting out of the ground and creating sinkholes. Our crews had to go out there and respond to that. So we'll be able to take care of the underlying utilities. Come back and pave it and then, you know, not have to get in there and molest it in in any way in in for quite a while, which is what our intent is, is to try to roll these things out in a way that. You know, you make the repairs and then you can leave the roadway to to be PG and E or other utilities won't get there and cut it up for quite some while. Another project that we have going on that just actually just got started is the West Side Flood Reduction and Sea Level Rise mitigation. Project. So right now this is in kind of preliminary design and permitting. This is primarily funded by the hazard, hazard mitigation program. The photo you're seeing right in front of you is Washington Street, which has experienced, as you can see in the timestamp back in 2012. November 29th, we had some flooding there that went over the entire roadway. So we are able to apply for and receive a grant from hazard mitigation. And we have a number of matching grant sources that we're trying to kind of pull in right now to 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 fill out the project, but we have that first part to move ahead with the preliminary design and permitting. This kind of gives you an idea of how far that project will reach as far as the different aspects of it. It goes everywhere from trying to deal with the flood. Flooding issues to trying to get it LID. LID installations where you'd have flow through planters and things like that that would help capture trash and infiltrate runoff. As well as fix some of our tide gates and install trash capture devices in in locations where it makes sense. So there's a kind of a lot wrapped up into this project, but it's really great to see those stormwater dollars here because we haven't had. Any funding for stormwater and we've had regulatory requirements with trash capture and other things. So this is. This is great to have these dollars coming in to be able to address a significant need here in the city. Another project that is in progress is our city fueling facility. This would be at the high, high tank or tank farm location where the low and high tanks are. This particular project is getting ready to finish design and then we'll be putting it out to bid. We have ordered some of the parts for it. So this one is in motion. We hope to have it constructed, construction beginning this summer. Another one that's in progress is the community wide brownfield assessment. Pro project. So you're, we're working through an EPA grant to evaluate sites across Eureka. To evaluate them for contamination, potential contamination and and hopes of being able to come. With a plan to address cleanup of these sites if they are found to be have hazardous materials on them or other things. And then then also hopefully in future phases, be able to go after dollars to bring in dollars to help clean up if there's the appropriate. I guess if if a project meets the needs as EPA sees them. So. These couple of sites that we see here, there's the old homes, Eureka lumber company where the mall is, where we have some lands around that area. And then there's also the balloon track is one of the the principal sites there that's being looked at to try to see if there's an opportunity with the. Whether it's cost or couplet or some other public benefit there to do some cleanup of that site. So that one's just in, still in the beginning phases and and getting moving. We are making some progress on it, but hopefully. As we get into the fall, we'll, we'll have something more to report back on. Another project that's in progress is the. Elk River Estuary and Title Marsh Enhancement Project. This is a amazing project, 114 acres of restoration and and. With a trail that stretches from the Hicksari Trail down to near where the. Humboldt Hill, Humboldt Hill Road over crossing is. So there's a lot of great things about this on on the left hand side here, you'll see kind of the two areas that are broken up with the Elk River going through the middle. And then and the Hicksari Trail running along the north side of Area One. And then on the right, you'll see kind of a rendering of what, how the, how the site's going to be opened up to title influence. So right now it's. There's levees along the the river in this case and tide gates. So the water can't spill over naturally unless it gets into a big flood or there's some other things going on. It doesn't flow back in those areas. Now with this project will breach that channels will be constructed, other habitat, things will be installed with the project, things like. Berms and other swales to allow for a tidal prism to move back and forth in there on both sides. So this is, you know, huge restoration project. Community Services was able to bring in a great amount of grant funds and. The wastewater treatment plan is going to contribute some dollars there to help kind of fill out the funding needs for this project. And and look for, look for, this is, well, first of all, it's about a $6 million project. And we're hoping to construct construction in probably the next two years, whether it's this year or next, can't really say at this point, hopefully this year, but it could potentially over the next two years to get it started and completed. So that's a very exciting project. Here's another photo, kind of a cool photo of what the, what the elevations look like. From a standpoint of, you can see the the dark blue would be the the deeper channels and then it comes up and away from there. So a very, very cool project. Let's see, and I think our last one before we change over would be our Cogen. Cogen Replacement Project. So this project is a project to replace our aging Cogen. Waukesha Cogen Engines that are original to the wastewater treatment plant. Our maintenance staff has done an amazing job of keeping these things running and limping along and rebuilding the motors and time and time again, just making sure these things keep going. This is the primary. Heat source for our digesters that keeps our plant operating the way that it needs to in order to treat all of our sewers. So. Not only replacing the Cogen engines, we're also installing a backup boiler system. Which will be much more of a reliable system that we can call on. We can use gas from the plant to run the the boiler. Or we can, if we need to, we can pull from the PG and E's natural gas system. So it gives us redundancy for the system. So. We'll also have some gas conditioning that will be installed with this. So that's a really big, that's an incredible need down to treatment plant. So that project's about a $3.2 million project and. What should be finishing up this spring. So that's that one, hopefully next year will will be a completed project. So now we'll transition on to. Getting into our actual projects that are, we're looking forward to coming up here in the next year and next, the next five years. We have seven divisions in the CIP, harbor and waterfront, information technology, land facilities, parks and recreation, streets and storm drains, water supply and wastewater. And these are all kind of broken up based on funding. And and how they're managed. So let's jump in. So we'll start with harbor and waterfront. Here we see, as as we typically do, we try to anticipate some potential funds to go towards. Needs at the, at the marina and with dredging. These are funds that are typically earmarks, though they, that depends on the amount of funding source that the, that the harbor fund brings in. These are, these are kind of hope to have versus there's money and we're going to do this right now. So. Nothing, nothing, not a huge project here this year in the harbor and waterfront. Coming up though, we'll have some, some good, the small boat ramp improvements project and some, some other projects in here, Fisherman Pile Fender Maintenance, some other projects coming along soon. Information Technology, we're actually going to do a couple of projects this first year. I think that we've actually been in a position to get projects done through with the IT department. A big one will be enough to start really working, cutting away at our our city's fiber optic network. We are aiming towards having a backbone of fiber optic that would connect our critical facilities and. Allow for a kind of uninterrupted communication. That's one thing that we struggle with oftentimes, depending on weather and other things is poor communication. Whether it's between. Wastewater Treatment, Water, Police Fire, City Hall is any communication city, all very critical that those communications get addressed. So this is intending to take a first step at installing some. Some part of those infrastructures and we'll get into it a little bit more here. Starting with City Hall Security, there's, we're going to consolidate some of the networking equipment. And secure it. Currently it's kind of dispersed. And so this is going to be an opportunity to bring it together, secure it, update some of the spaghetti wiring that's been installed over the years so that that particular system is. Much more reliable and secure. The fiber optic network, as I was mentioning. Earlier, really is going to focus on getting at that, that network backbone. And primarily, as I mentioned, that's, that's between say like City Hall and and other municipal police fire, these areas that are, that we know we need to have really solid communication that is uninterrupted. And then secondary, as we kind of move forward, projects where we have projects for paving or utilities and there's an opportunity with funding, we'll be able to try to put conduit in the ground. In areas that make sense to extend that connection of infrastructure to different facilities. This year with our Henderson Improvement Project, we're going to install some conduit there that'll help that backbone fiber optic. As well as some on W Street and and that will connect over to the water treatment facility and then on 14th Street, which in in the future will collect to Fire Station Four. Our next section is land and facilities. We have a few projects we'll highlight in this, the the Muni. Our settling basins, energy storage, the Elk River interpretive center. So let's get on to those. Municipal Auditorium is a awesome building. It's great site gets, I mean, the interior of it is really cool. But it needs some upgrades. It needs some accessibility improvements. It needs some maintenance. And so there's some dollars that we're going to put towards this here. Measure H dollars that'll go to, you know, roof fixing and ADA improvements. So this is, this is something that's been on the CIP ever since I've been here and it's finally like we can put a little, we can take a first step at trying to get at some of these improvements that really get that building. Back up in in more operational. Another project that we have is the settling basins. This is really to support our water and sewer and streets crews that do digs. They're digging wet soil. They need a place to dump it and separate it and and to deal with it. So. This is a project that's been a long time coming. The crews have been, they scramble to try to find ways to. To to deal with it and they do a good job, but this is really something, again, since I've been here that we've been trying to push for getting something that they can all use. So. This is a one that's been a long time coming and that should be going into hopefully construction this summer. Another big one that shows up in facilities is energy storage systems. This is about a $7 million project. This is to install new battery backup units to provide power during. Power outages and then also to when to better take advantage of rates during peak times at our facilities. So there's going to be installations at the wastewater treatment plant, the water treatment plant, the high tank facility, the city hall. And our Hill Street and Washington Pump Station. So a number of our real critical facilities are getting this, this critical battery backup system. So that's a really, that's a really cool. So that's a really, that's a really cool project and something that's going to provide a lot of resiliency to our infrastructure. Elk River Interpretive Center, so this is a regulatory, it's sort of a regulatory requirement, it sounds kind of odd, but through our process. Meeting with these, the the regional board and talking about our permit for the wastewater treatment plant and our compliance with the enclosed base nest rate policy. With having our treatment plant outfall where it is, one of the things that provides a benefit to the. To the bay and the resources of the bay would be an interpretive center, so this is one thing that we are looking at planning ahead for. Very early in the planning stages, it's the first time it's been in the CIP, as it's something that came out of the talks with the regional board. Recently, and so this is something that we hope to, you'll see more of as time goes on, but. The intent with the interpretive center is really providing educational opportunity. That is surrounded by a new project with the Elk River. Title, excuse me, the Elk River Estuary and Title Marsh Enhancement Project. You have the shoreline there, you have the Hickory Trail, we also have the wastewater treatment plant, which is providing funding that would provide funding for this interpretive center. The hope is to really get some great education and wildlife viewing and and additional trails and a lot of really. Really nice things out there in that area. So our next phase, next phase, our next section is the Parks and Recreation Section, so. We have a couple of projects we'll talk about here, real briefly, we have. Our City Parks Irrigation, so we'll do a project to extend or to upgrade some of the irrigation systems at. A number of parks, including Highland Ross, Kennedy, Cooper, Carson, so basically all the parks will get a refresher on irrigation. Their irrigation systems, which are very. Challenging to operate and also just because of the age and how the infrastructure, the condition it's in, so this will be a much needed upgrade. Another project that is coming along, you guys have, I'm sure you've heard much about it, is the Twenty Thirty and Jacob Haney Parks. Grant funded project, what you see here is the existing. Jacob Haney on the left and Twenty Thirty Park on the right, great park system. And then this is what the Community Services Team has really done a great job, not only going out and getting a. Six plus million dollar grant, but then coming up with a, you know, really great. Layout for a park and and, you know, really something the neighborhood can is really going to be, I think, very excited to see, so this is a. A great project, installing new volleyball court, basketball, roller hockey court, tennis court, open spaces. Playgrounds for different age groups, fitness areas, ADA access, restroom, concession storage, parking lots. Landscaping and lighting for the ball fields, some new, some renovation of the bleachers and other things, automated irrigation, parking improvements. So this is all grant funded, that it's it's a huge amount of grant fund going into a what's going to be a pretty amazing park in the end, so. I think they're, right now they're in the process of doing RFQ to get a consultant to help to work through the project and then after that. Probably looking at starting construction very eagerly later this summer. Another project that is in the works, it's it's shown, because we just got the grant this last winter. Is the First Slough Fish Passage Flood Plane Restoration and Coastal Habitat Connectivity Project. This is a project to look at the first slew. A watershed and not only assess the habitat, but also. Try to address some of the identified fish passage issues that are in this particular watershed. Last year, we were able to, while repairing critical utility infrastructure, daylight and open up the. The stream underneath Myrtle, that really opens up opportunities and this funding source really. Worked out well for opening up some of the areas above that for habitat and the potential to move some of those crossings, so this project. Not only gets through this assessment, but it also takes it all the way through the design and permitting, so when we come out of this project, a three. Three hundred thousand dollar roughly grant funded project, we should have. Designs in place to be able to go after future grant dollars for construction to potentially replace the. The failed culvert that's under Fourteenth Street, that doesn't appear to allow fish passage. You can see that down here on the right hand side, that's the inlet to the culvert that goes under Fourteenth Street, so very difficult to know how fish might navigate through that system. So this this one is a great project, we're going to be working on it this summer and over the winter with the design and then hopefully. Be able to in the and hopefully be able to go after grant funds in the coming spring to actually do a project. Okay, only a few more sections to go. Streets and Storm Drains. Okay, fun, we got a lot of projects to talk about here, I'll try not to drone on too much, but. We are going to talk a little bit about street maintenance and this is typically where I get to talk about. The disparity between the condition of our streets and the funding to maintain them. However. Yay, we have Measure H now, so whether you're a cat person, dog person, or I don't know, squirrel person. We all have something to celebrate here because we have now a dedicated funding source to address. Our street maintenance woes, so what does that look like, let's get a little bit into that. Here's a little bit of the past, I know we don't want to dwell on it too much, but back in seventeen eighteen, we were only operating with gas, gas tax dollars, you can see we did about. Two hundred thousand dollars worth of street maintenance projects, eighteen nineteen, the. Roadway Maintenance Repair Act brought forward additional dollars that came towards the city, so we were able to do more. Street maintenance where we worked on H Street from Sixteenth Henderson, Sixth and Seventh Street, those are great projects that were definitely needed. On high volume streets, we weren't able to do a project in nineteen twenty, putting aside dollars for Henderson. Not knowing, of course, Measure H was going to be a potential. So this year we have Henderson where we're using those dollars to repair the the street surfacing on Henderson, you know, our utility dollars, we're taking out the utilities underneath the street. This year, we're still on to Measure H yet, so bear with me, this year we have those stip dollars I talked about early, where we have one point eight million dollars. A combination of, you know, there there's a little bit of Armory Gas Tax, but the majority of this, this is stip dollars almost all the way through with some PG&E. Matching dollars from one of their projects to help repair the pavement where they had a project that had a lot of different cuts through the roadway and were able to work out a deal to. Bring some of those dollars over to incorporate into a much, you know, more inclusive, larger project. So here we see Fourteenth Street, Broadway to West, Highland, Broadway to Glen, Hawthorne, Broadway to Felth, Felth, Hawthorne to Del Norte. You guys can see the list here, it's a pretty decent list. Now we talk about jumping into Measure H where we're looking at a budget of. Three point five million dollars to work with, this is, this is consider, this is considerably an advancement in our funding for the maintenance of our streets and. You'll see here by, and the list really reflects it, because not only are we able to get it critical. Streets that are in bad condition and that we're losing because the pavement condition is so bad that you almost can't. Get it back to a condition without fully rebuilding it, in some cases, we do have to fully rebuild roads. But you'll see, we have a long list of roads that have a lot of length to them. And also getting into some of the residential areas and being able to get at some of those areas that need to have some maintenance to keep the pavement. Condition decent and then also some that, you know, might need more, like an overlay in order to to make those streets, kind of get them back into a working order. And it just, it keeps, we keep going with this as we look out five years, because that funding source is there and the projections, you know, kind of project this sort of revenue coming in, so. In twenty twenty-three, again, we're doing long stretch, long sections of very critical streets. Then we look at like Old Town, here in this area, you see we have a lot of, you know, Third Street, Second Third, CDEFG. H W X Y, I laugh because it's just the amount we've done in the past has been so minor and we're just like, we're barely even able to touch the problem. And this, this, you know, this voter passed. Measure is just really going to make a huge difference as far as the roadways in in the city of Eureka, so. Twenty twenty-five, we still, we see a similar, you know, similar amount of paving that gets done. Twenty twenty-six and so on, so we've, we've kind of shown you five years here of Measure H dollars because. That is, you know, that's what our CIP is, we've gone a little bit past it actually. But it's, you know, these may not, all these streets may not get done in the order that we showed them to you here, because every year, you know. Priorities shift a little bit and things change, the first year, that's kind of what we're shooting for right now, and that first year is not this summer, but that's the following summer. This year we have the projects that we talked about, the stip funded projects, so we actually will be getting a good amount of paving done on on really critical streets. But this is a major. It's the major advancement, so it's great news, hope you're all happy, I know I am. Our next project, again, I I mentioned the Storm Drain Improvements Project, we're in the design phase. Construction phase is coming, so that's why it's still in here. Great project, again, we talked about it already. This summer, hopefully, Halverson Trail Improvements, this is a donation funded project to. To include some landscaping and garden areas as well as trail improvements and those trail improvements are really necessary down there, we have some trees that are. Are wreaking havoc on the trail, so there's this, these four hundred thousand dollars in donations is going to go towards landscaping and some gardens. And to fix up the trail so that it continues to be something that's a, you know, an asset to the city.
Also going to be a park and playground out in front of Sacco there.
Beautiful, yes, it's a great project, thank you, City Manager Slattery. All right, jumping ahead to water supply, we're in, we've got a couple more folks, hang with me. Not a lot to really get out here that you haven't seen before, we have a lot of our water system needs repair, it's, we have. Asbestos cement pipe that is was traditionally installed, at least times, that was the typical way of installing it and it really doesn't hold up well. So we have a number of streets that we're getting at to getting out there and and replacing mains. Henderson Improvements, that'll be that whole section from Fairfield to D, now all the water main will be replaced there and all the services will be upgraded. Fourteenth Street, P to West, and then Eastwood Drive, which I believe is a cast iron pipe, has some, a lot, a lot of. Repairs are necessary out there by our crews, so that'll be a good one to get replaced as well. In addition to these main projects, we're also going out there and trying to get ahead of any of these potential street projects we come out, this is the. This is the, I guess, the good problems to have, you have, we're going to go do a lot of street maintenance, well, we don't want to go up there and tear up those streets. Right after we repave them, so we're getting out ahead of our utilities and trying to fix what needs to be fixed ahead of those streets, which means, again, when I was talking about those. Priorities shifting, we're working really hard to try to make sure we get the utilities that need to be done underneath those streets, taking care of first before we pave it, so. Sometimes that means shuffle in a street from year to year in order to make that happen. We will get out and do a number of valve clusters that need to be repaired ahead of the street paging, paving projects and those will happen in this year. In our water improvement projects and in our continuing projects going forward. We're also going to replace the high tank pump station, this, these pumps are, the the station was original nineteen fifty, I think the pumps might have been upgraded. At some point, they're still very temperamental and in need and certainly past their useful life. So this this system will get updated with variable frequency drives, the pumps that will be installed, there will be new variable frequency drives. That'll help with the battery system that's being installed at the high tank, because those those VFDs will, they. We need those in order to marry up with the battery system and so that you can be able to switch back and forth between the two power sources to power the pump, so. Again, trying to make everything kind of work together as these projects come up, you got a project that we've had out here for a long time with this. Pump station replacement and then you bring in a new project where you're putting these battery backups in there, so we want to want everything to work together as best it can. And so that's what, that's our efforts here. Wastewater, our final section of projects to talk about, and it's our typically our biggest section of projects to talk about. As you see, year one to five, the total at the very bottom in orange, you know, typically five to seven million dollars a year of planned projects. Our treatment plant and our collection system is aging and it needs, it needs repair, so. That's what's represented here, we have a few projects to talk about, first I'll give a little background for those of you who aren't familiar with the treatment plant, it's. It was commissioned in nineteen eighty-four, it's about thirty-seven years of age. Useful life of wastewater treatment plants, about fifty years, and that's for the concrete components of it, the electrical and mechanical systems are typically fifteen to twenty years. So what we're dealing with a lot down there is fifteen, you know, systems that are thirty-seven years old that are needing an upgrade and replacement. So that's why you see these projects like the Cogen Project, the digester covers, the secondary clarifiers, it's all very similar, it's all coming from this. The the aging facility that we have down there. Another project that we have. That's in the CIP every year is our sewer improvements, here we see a couple of different technologies we use to try to save dollars and provide less impact to roads. And to natural areas, what we have is a, a, on the left, you'll see a crew that runs a bursting. Burst and pull system where they pull the pipe through the old and typically vitrified plate pipe system, burst it and then you have a new pipe. That's usually plastic, good to go for, you know, hundreds of years. And then on the right, what you see is a crew that runs a CIPP, a cured in place. Liner that goes down inside the pipe and cures inside the liner, so you don't have to trench the entire width of the or length of the pipe. You have to trench in certain, or you have to dig in certain places, but it really reduces down the amount of F, amount of energy that's that's applied and also the cost. So this is a way that we can really try to stretch our dollars and get a good product in the ground, help us with what we need, but without at the same time not. You know, trying to get as much out of we can out of those dollars. Pump station upgrade, so this is our pump stations that actually power the crosstown interceptor to get the sewer from the collection system to the treatment plant. We have, again, aging pumps that need pumps and motors that need to be replaced. This project will look at, I believe, Hill Street and Washington Street this next year and then McCollum's the year after to do a full replacement of our pumps and motors. So, again, the VFDs will be our plan to install, that'll help with the battery backup system, it's good, it's a good project, very needed, we we lost a couple. Three pumps in the last year, I think, have gone down where they failed, but at two of the different stations, so. We we can see it coming, they're starting to go and and they need to be upgraded. Enclosed Basin Nest Race Compliance, we talked a little bit about the Elk River Estuary and Title Marsh Improvements. That is a project that is that we're putting dollars from, that we're being able to contribute dollars from, that'll help us with compliance with the regional board. Our schedule for compliance with enclosed basin nest arrays is stretching to twenty thirty-one and this is everything from putting in. You know, projects like the Estuary, you know, helping fund the Estuary Project, helping fund the Interpretive Center Project, but also improvements down the plant. That'll help us meet those regulatory permit requirements that we have at the treatment plant, so this is the schedule of of how things look going out into the future. And there'll be costs that are associated with this that are going to be significant because those are, those are what are required by the by the permit. So finally, we're going to talk a little bit briefly about funding and just note a couple of things about. Trends that we're seeing in funding of capital program projects. Here you see a large slice of red is grants, well, that's in large part because community service went out and killed it and got a huge grant. For Twenty Thirty Park and and Jacob Haney, part of that is this. You know, it's grants and other sources, so it's not just grants, it's other sources as well, so like the Tesla battery backup energy storage systems. That falls into, that's seven million dollars worth of infrastructure. That's also included the West Side Storm Drain Project where that's a million dollar project, so all these projects. That, you know, we're trying to bring in dollars into the city, that's where you see this this large slice of the pie right there. Another thing to kind of consider, the pie looks different this year because of those grants, last year we only did, I think. Even though we didn't do those projects, we anticipated about thirteen million dollars worth of projects, this year we have anticipated in this first year. This year by twenty twenty-one, about twenty-nine point three million worth of projects, that's a, that's a significant increase and a lot of that is being driven. Not only by these grants and their sources, but also Measure H with our streets, you know, and having, you know, a a large portion of dollars coming in for those projects. So, very exciting to see that and and these very necessary projects being taken on. That's kind of what the pie looked like last year, not a lot to see there, a lot of the sixty. That's kind of what the pie looked like last year. Not a lot to see there. A lot of the 65% was, I think, enterprise funds, so very driven by water and sewer funds last year versus this year, driven by other sources where water and sewer only make up maybe 20, 24%. So certainly different. And our recommendation, boy, I need a drink of water. For council to receive and file the City of Eureka Capital Improvement Program 2021 and consider the first year of the CIP for the upcoming budget process. Thank you, everybody. And I'll take questions, certainly.
Thank you, Jesse. That was a lot of information. You did a great job. Does anybody have questions? Councilmember Bauer.
Yeah, great presentation, Jesse, and it's great to see all the good work that's going on in the city. It's gonna be an amazing year of construction. I had a couple things, so I have a lot of questions, but I'll spare you for only a couple. The, I just want to make sure that people understand, those that are still watching, that the kind of schedule that you're showing for our roads is really based on, I think, a pavement health index or something like that. Like you said, things do, do move around based off of need, but the overall majority of that is based off of really just the condition of pavement, right?
Yeah. Yeah, the pavement condition indexes, that's what you're, that's what you're looking for there.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. And then I was just wondering about, as far as paving goes, if there's any thought to, or maybe we should think about, you know, using recycled asphalt, just trying to save money. And I've seen a lot back when I used to deal with Caltrans is cast in place, you know, recycled asphalt. It's technologies there. I don't know about the cost, but just think of resources and energy use and all that. If that's something that we consider or we mandate or anything.
Yeah, we require a percentage of our paving to include recycled asphalt, and it's similar to Caltrans, and it kind of changes pending on the project and also the availability. We also, we don't always have that availability for those products, but but to step away from the recycled asphalt in particular, I think emerging technologies, we're always trying to understand what's out there and, you know, as the county seat, we, you know, we have to find ways, county seat, City of Eureka, we're a big city in the county. And oftentimes, it's difficult for new technologies to make it inside Humboldt County, honestly, because there isn't enough massive projects to bring in, say, a different piece of equipment that you need to do, say, like full depth asphalt reclamation, where you can recycle all that aggregate and everything in place and put it back without having to haul it out of there or bring new material in. You can actually take care of it right there. Well, we do try to work with our other agencies, whether it's Humboldt County, the other municipalities, to, to work towards the, being able to have big enough projects where we can bring in that sort of technology. We do that with our, our micro-surfacing project where we're able to kind of get together and bring in, bring in, you know, technology that we can't normally, we wouldn't normally have here. So we'll continue to do that, and I think that's, I agree, we need to continue to look for those opportunities. You know, that not only are, you know, they're less resource intense, but also, you know, cost effective for the city.
That's great. And I just want to say, yeah, I do agree that the first year of the SIP should be considered in the budget process. So, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Castellano.
I have a couple of questions, but also this is a report, so I can make comments right now as well. Yes?
On these reports, I believe we have public comment because there's an action on it, because the action is to accept it.
Perfect, then I'll hold off. My questions are, let's see, has anything, just so I know, has anything been removed from the previous CIP that is notable or you know, that's not coming forward that, that was planned already?
I don't think so. We tried to move everything back in that was kind of taken off the table. I really don't think we, I don't think anything got left out, you know, with that, with that change. I think every, you know, kind of everything got shifted back in, but yeah, that's, that's my recollection. There was a lot of projects and I would have to really take in on that, but I don't think anything got left out.
Great. And then I'm assuming, you know, there's sort of an untold story here that a lot of, you know, we're doing more projects, so that would be an increase in some really good jobs for people and things like that. Is that true? Or are people just gonna be, I don't know, like, how does, I mean, it seems like this is more work than, than has been done in the past. Maybe I'm wrong.
Well, you know, it varies every year. I think the amount of, I mean, I think if you certainly look at like the paving jobs, I know that's a, that's a huge increase in that area in particular. And then the, the parks, you know, like where you get a grant, and when you bring in six or seven million dollars, that's, that goes a long way for, you know, whether it's, you know, all the different, whether it's professionals and consultants to contractors, to material suppliers, to, you know, that's, you know, at your entry level wage jobs, you know, that increases all that, I think. So that's, I would have to agree with you.
That's all. Thanks.
Councilmember Bregal.
So on that note, with more jobs, are we gonna be hiring local people to do this work primarily?
We always try to use local work when it, when it makes sense. Oftentimes, when we're doing our, when it comes to our bidding process and our procurement policy, we have to follow those requirements. So if we're doing a low bid, you know, construction type job, we, we have to select the, the low bidder and we have to follow the, the policy and the state's requirements as far as those bidding, those bids go. So when, when possible, we can, and we take advantage of those stipulations in the procurement policy when possible. So when possible.
I have a question about, I saw you have a lot of, you have your IT improvements in there. They're mostly city centric. Not necessarily economic development centric. However, I know you guys are actively working on, you know, trying to take advantage of things that are happening in the community. And like looking for appropriate dig once, places to lay conduit. That's not necessarily in there yet. How is that going to be incorporated if it's not sort of identified in the plan?
Well, it's, that's, that is something that needs to be worked out. I don't have all the answers for you. I could say that we, you know, from the standpoint of trying to make it possible to implement and move those things ahead as far as standardization, we are working on that as far as having, you know, all the specification designs necessary to say, okay, if we want to do this, this is what we need to have installed because traditionally, a city doesn't, fiber optic isn't something that we would traditionally, you know, work with. It's not anything that's really complex from the standpoint of the installing conduit and that sort of thing, but we're definitely working towards growing that, that knowledge base and also having all those, you know, kind of standard drawing specifications, everything you would need to be able to implement a project. And then we have, we see an opportunity come along where, say, there's a company coming in that wants to install fiber. We'll have that available to incorporate, you know, for them to use and also, you know, hopefully be able to find ways to work with them to expand what they're doing. But it's something that's a work in progress. I think there's, there's some work to be done there, but we're, we're, we're starting.
I know you guys, you're going to meetings and you're talking about it. So I was just, you know, wondering how it mixed in. Any other questions? All right. Do we have any comments from the public on this item?
No, Mayor, we have not had a request for anyone to speak, although I can't, let me take, I don't know if anybody's joined us because we do have our phone number up on the screen, so so that people can call, but I haven't let anyone new in, so I don't think so.
Thank you. And Councilmember Arroyo.
Great. So it's time for comment, right?
It is time for comment. For comment now.
Okay, okay, cool. I'm really excited about this. This is a very beautiful document, by the way. It's really just easy to understand, and I really appreciated reading it. I love the capital improvement program, like it's just so, it's so exciting to think about what kind of infrastructure work we're going to be able to do. And in some ways, it feels like a part of our legacy. You know, all of our legacy to the city. So I'm really appreciative of staff's hard work on this. I had a couple of questions and comments, and I thought I'd just kind of smudge them together. Smurge is a real word. City manager slavery. So one of my questions was, or comment questions was around this section of Waterfront Drive between C Street and kind of the Samoa Bridge. I mean, I'm very excited to hear about the Halverson Trail Improvements and the connectivity between, like, Bykato Fisheries as well as like kind of the finishing touches on that G to J section. And I know there's some wayfinding in the works, but it doesn't really address for me the question of like when the, when the county is able to move forward with the final four miles of the Bay Trail. People anticipate like an increase in commuter traffic and, you know, it's not necessarily conducive, like the way the trail is currently constructed in the sidewalk section, particularly between G to J, isn't necessarily conducive to commuter bicyclists and pedestrians being able to necessarily share the, the part of the sidewalk that's a little on the narrower side. So I know we assume that most bicyclists will just go in the road on that section. But it's not clear necessarily to users that they should do that. So I was wondering if there would be interest to basically do a, like Bike Boulevard, just with signage and paint to indicate that bikes will be in the roadway, sharing the roadway and make it clear to cyclists that they're welcome there as well as to motorists that they'll be there. It seems to me like low hanging fruit, but if I'm missing something, please, please let me know, and I'd love to hear your thoughts.
No, I think, yeah, I could, I think I, I know the section you're talking about there where, yeah, that transition between bike lanes, the new bike lanes, and then to kind of the built out, the existing road width there that has parking on both sides in the lanes in the middle. So I don't think that's, I think that's something that could be considered through there. I mean, that's a part of Old Town where, you know, traffic is, you know, it's slowed down through there already. It makes sense, or it should be slowed down through there. I think we've solved a couple of stop signs there that has helped with that as well. So at least one on waterfront, but that would be a location that would seem to be logical to have, you know, like you're saying, stripage and signage that would help indicate, hey, this is where, first of all, vehicles, you gotta share the road, and you know, this is a place for the bikes to go.
Yeah, I'm not necessarily talking about like new bike facilities, which I know some advocates have brought up, but like the way that Arcata has the Bike Boulevard on 11th Street. No, it's not 11th. It's the other one. Anyway, it's a letter street, but the way they've designated just like a street, I, is that the one? I'm getting signals, hand signals. The, the way that there's a street that's really just sort of like, bikes are encouraged to be there, like the, the simplest level of Bike Boulevard that we could imagine, I think, is what I'm picturing. So I, I would love to see if there's a way to incorporate that. I know it's like adding a project, but if there's a way to incorporate that with some of the Halverson Trail Improvements or any other work that's going on, I would personally love to see that, and I think it would make a lot of trail stakeholders really happy.
So I, I was gonna say something. I think that as you're going from west to east along Waterfront Drive there, I think that that's just a wayfinding sign issue to let people know to when they come off of F or even on C Street to go and use the bike lanes that are there. But as it comes from east to west, like from T Street down, some of the discussions we've had with Schneider and Bodie about their development for the RV park there, there's, there's a small section of trail, and that's a thought process for them to make some improvements there and then put in something more than a, and I'll defer to the engineer on this, but I think there's enough room going from T Street all the way down to C Street potentially to get in a bike lane to go down that way.
I mean, that'd be awesome, too. I'm, I'm like, anything more than just a Bike Boulevard would be great, but at the very least, I was hoping we could consider a Bike Boulevard.
Because the bike, that, that section there, and we've, as you know, had a lot of discussions with the Trails Council about this. That section from Halverson all the way through to C Street is intended for people to, yeah, you can ride your bike, but maybe get off and enjoy Old Town or enjoy the view or, and you know, it's, it's for recreation as well.
Yeah, and I, and I see a lot of users like fully enjoying everything about the trail right now and the sidewalk and the like different options that there are as, as a like recreational and pedestrian amenity. But when it comes time for like connectivity for this transportation trail, I just want to be sure that we're supporting like people that are using it as commuters to the best of our abilities. So I appreciate the interest in that, and I'm super excited about the Halverson Trail and Playground Improvements. And I just had one other question about when I, when I thought about park funding, I was wondering if we applied for per capita funds from Prop 68. Does anyone know?
We did, and, and there's been a delay. We've, we brought the resolution to council a while ago. We are expecting around 250,000, but they're significantly behind.
Yeah, they have not distributed those funds. I just wanted to be sure, and I apologize for forgetting that that happened. Good work. It was like the easiest grant funding availability because it's like just, we're gonna give you money, you just have to tell us you want it. Like, oh, okay.
Councilmember Castellano.
I want to reiterate Mayor Seaman's interest in, you know, once in just making a plan for broadband and internet connectivity kind of beyond the municipal necessity. And then, of course, I mean, obviously, we can't include it in the CIP, and so we have some sort of plan, but just, I'm interested. And then I feel like PSAs are your friends because there's so many cool projects going on and people are asking me all the time just saying, what, what's going on? What's up with 14th? What's it, you know, and, and there's, you have all these great diagrams, like the inside of roads that people want to see that. I like how pumps work, and I think that people would get really excited for a, you know, it's not all, you know, there, there's so many cool things that you may take for granted because it's your kind of everyday job that I think the general public would be so excited to learn more about. Whether that be a weekly or a couple of times a month kind of PSA, like, look how this pump works and why we're replacing it, or, you know, look at the inside of the road. Like, when people are fixing the roads, I go and I try to look at the inside of the road, but it's a little weird and awkward. So, you know, if you put a picture on, help, help those of us who, who want to see that, like the bursting system. That's really cool. People want, people will want to know how that works. Okay, that was, that was it.
I'll second that, too.
YouTube channel.
Projects, too, also lends itself to having an occasional PSA because people forget. Sorry, Jesse, I didn't mean to interrupt you at all. Anybody else have a comment, or we will need a motion to file, to receive and file this. So Councilmember Arroyo and Bregal, so we'll do Arroyo and then Bregal.
I move that we receive and file the capital improvement program.
Well, second, and Jesse, thank you. It was a beautiful presentation, very thorough, very thorough.
I, I will say every time I would think, what about, and then it would come up right after that, which was pretty nice.
Exciting things happening for our city.
Yes. So you have a motion, a second, any other discussion about this? All right. And I'll say one final thing. I think this is what being on the city council is all about. I mean, these really are the projects that and literally build the city. So and often underappreciated, but I certainly love to hear about it every year. So let's do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Castellano.
Aye.
Councilmember Moulton.
Aye.
Councilmember Arroyo.
Heck, yes.
Councilmember Bauer. Councilmember Burgel.
Yes.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
And now we will move on to our city manager report. Oh, wait, Councilmember Burgel has something to say.
So just a point of order. Do we have to extend the meeting?
Oh, my God, it's nine forty five. I have to say, I was so enthralled. I did not even know how late it was.
Jesse, that was an excellent presentation.
Very good report. I literally have not looked at the clock once.
They don't call him the jewel for nothing.
Yes, we do.
So we extend the meeting till 10. What time is it now?
It's nine forty five, so 10 minutes. I'm, it's nine forty six. That'll get us about 10:15 would probably allow council reports, too.
You think 10:15?
A half an hour for the city manager and then everybody else. If we got done early, that'd be okay.
Be awesome. Okay, I'll I'll do the 10:30, whatever it is.
10:15. See, we have another second for 10:15.
A second.
Thank you. Do we, can we do a thumbs up vote? This is what we've done before. Is everybody okay with it? All right. Thank you so much. I absolutely, I cannot believe I didn't notice what time it was. And so city manager slatter.
Thank you, Mayor Seaman, and good evening, council. I just want to do a brief update on kind of the. Programs and projects we've done related to COVID and just given overall, it's kind of apropos because we had a public comment talking about. How we support our businesses. Just not city related, but you know, the. Paycheck protection, pay protect, paycheck payroll protection program has given out over $67 million. During COVID and they've helped out 7,132 jobs for 703 businesses, but the city itself. Has also done a really good job in this arena. To date, we've given almost $2 million to support our residents and our businesses. And this doesn't include the first thing that we did, which was defer our water and sewer increases that were a part of our rate review, which. Didn't increase their water and sewer bills by 5%. So that was one of the first projects, programs that we started related to the pandemic. And then we took some Hauser Successor Agency funding after that and an amount of $250,000, $50,000 of which went to. Nonprofits dealing with the community members experiencing, experiencing homelessness and that money went really quickly. We also set aside $200,000 for residents. For mortgage assistance and that helped out over 100 families and individuals within the city. We also. Received some cares funding from CDBG. It hasn't been programmed yet, but we were approved for the funding. $75,000 of that went to the homeless. Excuse me, the Humboldt Senior Resource Center for their telemedicine program. And then another $75,000 is going to go to a utility assistance program for our community members. That money. I believe is getting okayed to be spent soon. And so we'll start sending out some information on that relatively quickly. And then for the Eureka Cares Program, we issued grant, 20 businesses grants up to $165,000 for outdoor. Retail and facilities. Four parklets will be constructed at the Sea Grill Cafe Noon or Old Town Coffee and Chocolates and the Siren Song. We also use some of that funding for all the improvements at the Clark Plaza, which are currently underway, which will turn that into a whole new venue that will. Offer, you know, dining area for people to order takeout to. We also, through the engineering department and public works, have issued over 21 encroachment permits. There's what? Six temporary parking lot cafes on city property at the Sea Grill, the Vista Del Mar, Medrone Tap House, Siren Song Tavern, Green Lily and the Shanty. We've also established 12 different sidewalk cafes at the Old Town Coffee and Chocolates, the Green Lily, those bagels, provisions, cafe waterfront, Fatsy Klein's, Gallagher's, Ramones, 511, Chapala. Oberon Grill, Opera Alley Bistro. And then we also have Boardwalk Cafes and Parklets at the Diver Bar and Grill, Jack's Seafood and the Bayfront Restaurant. More recently, we've had the Bridge Program, which set aside $300,000 for businesses. That money is. For the most part accounted for with a waiting list, but to date, we've received 51 applications and have issued over $152,000 in payments for January and February rent for 38 different businesses. We've also established the. Window, the window palms and five different windows and vacant properties in our commercial areas. We've also established the neighborhood grant program. We've received three eligible, eligible applications so far. We're seeking more. So if anybody's watching that, we still have a lot of funding. Available for that. We also are getting a second round of. CDBG funding that's going to expand on some of these programs. So we'll be able to continue to help. And we'll develop two new programs that will probably come back to council with to help out our businesses and our residents. I really want to thank Economic Development Manager Swan Osbury, as well as Economic Development Coordinator. Christine Tyson and our housing technician. Kristen Raymond or K Ray for implementing all these programs and coming up with the ingenuity to do so, also with the help of. Director Millar in the Finance Department on putting this all together. But. I think it's been a significant assistance to our residents and to our businesses. And I think the way that we've looked at this funding that we've had, not only our our own funding to help out these businesses, but also some of the funding we received from the state. I think we're doing the right thing and helping our businesses and not going back and offsetting any loss of revenue in our general fund, but we'll continue to do so. And that is all I have tonight and look forward to the council reports.
Thank you very much.
Mayor and council, I just wanted to give you an update on our email server right now. Emails from the outside are still having a problem. Coming in, but it's sporadic. Some are coming in, some are not. They're touching the outside of our firewall and. It's very, they're still working on it. Our IT staff is dedicated and they're on their third consultant that they've called in to help them with this problem. It's an unusual one that they haven't seen, but they'll be working on it through the night. I told them that they could, you know, sleep, but they they want to get this up and running. So. For any members of the public out there, some of the emails are coming in, some are not. So if you ever have a problem, please give us a call. At 441-4144. And we'll return your call as soon as we can and make sure that. Assistance is provided. Thank you.
Thank you for that update. Very much. All right. And so now it is time for council member reports and. I will just go from left to right on my screen. So we will start with Councilmember Castellano.
Okay. Hey, everyone. Let's see. I have notes. Okay, I've been continuing to go to meetings, been pretty active with the. COVID Economic Resilience Consortium. And in particular, there's a housing group that's. Really kind of working hard to try to see if some new and innovative projects might be feasible. This coming Sunday, I am co-hosting a performing arts round table with. Ruthie Engelke from Corporation Humboldt and Calder Johnson from NCRT and Zach Prestonhaus from. Humboldt Theater Collective, something, something close to that. That's it. 5:00 PM on Sunday and it's open to any performing artist. Let's see. I did want to bring up just related to outdoor performances and the performing arts, you know, that it, there, there was. An article in the paper today, I believe, but. You know, it continues to be an industry that hasn't had much opportunity during the pandemic. So I, you know, I definitely feel for, you know, businesses that are that are struggling, you know, I, I, my business is in a similar position, but. You know, I I think there there could be some innovative opportunities for outdoor performance in the city, you know. Potentially, you know, of course, making the necessary precautions due to COVID and things like that, but I would be interested in. And working with city staff to. Just kind of see what, or if if city staff want to bring forward some opportunities for what might be available. You know, I think it also can really kind of satisfy a. A public health need. You know, just that if if we offer safe opportunities for people to be outdoors and see other people. Then, you know, they may be less likely to to engage in less safe activities. You know, of course, all of this would have to be very mindful of whatever, you know, would be working with public health and, you know, in our county. Would council be interested in that? I guess I'm looking for kind of a general interest from council. Great. Thank you. And, oh, and I had a really engaging and. Meeting with Chief Watson and Sergeant LaFrance and Jeff Davis talking about litter today. So. Yeah, it's it's just something I'm continuing to think about and talk to people about. And. Yeah, so that's what's been going on.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Moulton.
Big thing on my plate right now is strategic visioning, like all we're doing. I just wanted to remind folks that it's a really, really interesting process and it is actually a totally open process. So if somebody wants to watch our very long. Somewhat entertaining meetings, they can. That'll be happening Fridays from now until I guess we're done through through the end of February. And then tomorrow I'm attending a League of California Cities Roundtable on homelessness issues. And the benefit of the the League of California Cities is getting to see how other people deal with stuff. Maybe learn, steal some good ideas or learn some lessons from things that they have or haven't done very well. So I'm hoping to. Add to the pile of awesome ideas for this complex problem.
Thank you. Councilmember Burgel.
Thank you. I'm going to keep it brief because it's late. I just, I think probably the highlight of my last couple of weeks is I got to go watch the. Challenge coins be presented, the Valor Challenge Coin. Be presented to the lady in pink, Heidi Johnston and Patrick Thomas. And you may remember that they were, Heidi actually dove into the bay and saved a man whose car went into the bay. You know, that kind of human excellence just always blows my mind. It's just such a gift to have. People in our community that that are just so. Awesome like that. So I think that was probably the highlight of, like I said, the last two weeks, I did go to the Pack Out Green Team cleanup, which is always fun. There's great people, great prizes and a lot to do. And then lastly, and most importantly, I will be plunging this year in the perilous plunge. And this is the 20th year and I think it's my 11th year of plunging. So you can donate to the cause. On the, on Discovery Museum's Facebook page or on my Facebook page. We're going in the bay. We're socially distancing, but it's going to be fabulous. The RCM Victor. Not victims, vixens. Sorry, vixens are back. It's late. Thank you.
Thank you. And I like how we've sort of just gone in order of. The words that we serve. So we'll just go to word four now. Scott Bauer.
Thank you. Yeah. I did a JPA meeting. I actually tuned into the Nordic Farms Community Forum, which was really cool. Next time they do it, if you haven't tuned in to what's going on on the peninsula, you should. It's really, really amazing. Strategic visioning has been a a great experience. And like council member Moulton said, you know, please tune in. It's been, it's a really good thing for the city. You know, I I want to just thank our healthcare workers in our community. Seems like people are losing patience with this whole, you know, pandemic and we need to kind of hang in there, you know, and understand it is real. And it's, it's more than a few half a percent or a few tenths of a percent that are that are perishing from this. And I want to share something. One last thing is. I tried to set my parents up in in Arizona where they live with getting the vaccine. And if if anybody in our community thinks it's difficult in Humboldt County or or California, you don't know anything. I'm getting unstable here. I think I spent over an hour per parent and I still, I'm not sure if they're signed up and. When they're going to get a vaccine and it is, it's insane. So we're lucky to have. A fairly, you know, good system. And lastly, I I just, I I'd like to put it out there that I hope I'm playing on trying to do a ride along the sea set soon. I want to see, see them in action and see how that works. And maybe that's something.
I want to go.
Yeah, let's, let's do it.
Oh, sorry. I didn't realize I wasn't muted. No, they told me to go because of COVID. That's why I was like, if you get to go, I want to go because I've been trying to go all year.
They will have to wait a bit. And that's it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Alrighty. And Councilmember Royal.
Awesome. Well, I I got my, I was fortunate enough to get my first dose of the Pfizer vaccine today, so. I say that, you know, because I think it's important to model. Good leadership around. Public health opportunities like that. And fortunately, as a Coast Guard member, I was able to get that. And. Since I'm still doing contact tracing, et cetera, that was, that was. That was a good move. So now I can help continue to support people in our community. In, you know, really trying to. Improve resilience to this pandemic. So I. I encourage everyone who may be watching this to get it if you have the opportunity to do so. And I feel great. It's only been a few hours, but I feel awesome. And as far as other things going on, I've been continuing to work with the neighborhood group on F Street. Really focused south of. The Henderson Center neighborhood and they've really continued their slowing F Street, slow the F down campaign. And so those folks are really continuing to really organize and be fired up. And. There was a little bit of confusion about, I don't know if any of you are getting their emails that are sort of like a. Form, form email, but there's a little bit of confusion about who is getting them. Those, a lot of the ones we received were supposed to go to the Measure Z Committee for the county. So they said, we're so sorry about the confusion. They had set up a form where you can email elected officials or appointed officials, but. But some of them had been going to the wrong place. But anyway, they're doing great work and continuing to advocate for. The county to make some improvements and our staff have been really helpful in. Looking at opportunities to support their, their pushes on the county for a stoplight at Oak and Oak and F Streets outside of city jurisdiction, but obviously. Related to our residents as well. And so that's been really great. And I want to thank staff for their responsiveness and support there. And I was. Elected as the board chair of Humboldt Transit Authority again, so I'll continue to be the chair there. And I. Always welcome folks who have questions or want to have conversations around transit. To reach out. It's obviously a pretty difficult time for transit agencies, because a lot of people who have the choice to not use transit. Or to work, you know, remotely are not, are not using it. But they really, you know, HA has really upped the ante on cleaning and distancing and. Been strict about mask wearing. And so it's, they're doing everything they can. They're doing everything right. I'm continuing to work. On some. Just brainstorming improvements to messaging and safety around the North Jetty, but also ultimately the South Jetty as well. Folks who may be following that, like several people have been swept off or jumped off or fallen off the jetty. Jetties and it's a real ongoing hazard and it's, you know, it's something that affects both visitors and and locals alike. So I think. So I think as, as next steps emerge, I may, you know, suggest that we even make that part of our messaging. I know we don't want to be fear inducing for visitors, but we, I do recognize that a lot of people who come to Eureka are likely to go to the beach and the jetty and may not be familiar with it. So if there's ways that we can even help get that word out, that would be really, that would be really awesome. And beyond that, I think that's all I have for now. I really would echo the encouragement to tune in for the strategic visioning process if people are interested in kind of hearing us talk about ideas that we don't often have the space and time to talk about here.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Oh, councilmember Moulton. Oh, is that a goodbye?
No, I'm so sorry. I forgot to mention something and Natalie reminded me, but the South Eureka Neighborhood Alliance has, can, is convening an online town hall to speak with myself and with City Manager Slattery. And that'll be February the 25th in the evening. I believe it starts at 6:00 and goes for about an hour and a half. So that's SENA, the South Eureka Neighborhood Alliance. They have a Facebook page. Or you can contact me directly and I can give you a link to that. It'll be via Zoom. And we'd love to talk to people in the second ward directly. Especially about, I know everybody's going to want to talk about what's going to happen at the Jacobs campus.
All right. And councilmember Burgal.
Just quickly, I wanted to say that I too had my vaccine and I wanted to let you know that it's been Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, four days. And I'm, I'm amazing. So, you know, I mean, I feel great. So I was sore and a little PTSD, but other than that, I'm good. So I hate shots. Thank you.
Nice. Well, I will just close by saying that I'm sorry if I'm giving something away, but Pam Powell starts her Tuesdays at 7:00 AM meeting every Tuesday, which means that when these meetings go this late, she's been going since 7:00 AM. And I thought of that today because she, because she invited me to that meeting. Second, I want to say I'll see you all on Friday. I'm looking forward to it and bye y'all.
See you later. Have a good night.
Pam Powell, you are the bomb.
You are.
Good night.